Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 6th meeting of the Glendale City Council. Will you all please come to order? And let's start with roll call.
Council members Asadrian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Garpetian, Kasakian, Mayor Najarian.
Here.
Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag for which it stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All." The invocation. Please remain standing.
Thank you. Let us begin by acknowledging that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tonga people. In the spirit of the recent May Day observance, let us take a moment to honor the contributions and rights of workers within our community. May we reaffirm our commitment to advocating for fair labor practices, equitable working conditions, and the dignity of all individuals in the workforce. Let us carry forward the momentum of May Day, remaining mindful of the challenges faced by workers in our city and seeking to address them with compassion and resolve. May discussions today be guided by a shared commitment to fostering economic justice, equity, and respect for all. Thank you.
Thank you, you may be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please read your report?
Yes, the agenda for the May 6th, 2025 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on May 2nd, 2025 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and what's next?
Next are presentations and appointments. The first item is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, May 13, 2025, by Assistant City Manager John Tachalian.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of council. Next week, we just have the City Council meeting. There are quite a number of consent items on that calendar, but I'll focus on the action items for this evening. The first item will be from Management Services. Regarding the appointment of Glendale's three members to the Burbank Glendale Passing Airport Authority Commission, that'll be followed by a report from the Fire Department requesting approval of standardization of specialized equipment for high-capacity lifting manufactured by Paratek Incorporated. City Attorney will provide two staff reports that evening. The first related to the adoption of rules pertaining to council meeting procedures and decorum, and the second will be related to the review of the mayor's selection process. And the last item will be from Public Works, asking for an award of contract for petroleum testing and repairs, petroleum tank testing and repairs.
Thank you, and what's the next item?
The next item is commendations for the Children's Bookmark Contest winners.
Yay!
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. I am Jaclyn Romano, children's librarian for Library Connection at Adams Square and the Bookmobile, and I served as the lead for this year's Children's Bookmark Contest. Each year, the library invites children in preschool through eighth grade to design a bookmark based upon that year's summer reading theme. The 2025 theme is "Level Up at Your Library", and we encourage children to celebrate playing, games, and of course, the library through their artwork on the bookmarks. We had 470 entries across schools in GUSD and beyond. One winner from each grade level was selected by a blind panel of three judges made up of staff and community members. The winning bookmarks will be distributed at our libraries beginning on the first day of the Summer Reading Challenge, June 1st, 2025. We have a number of our winners joining us here this evening, along with our families and principals. We are so grateful to see such strong support for our winners, since we know a strong community equals student success. So thank you to those who support our students. Thank you so much to the City Council for supporting our students and acknowledging our 2025 Bookmark Contest winners today. And now, I'll pass it to Jennifer Driscoll to announce the winners.
All right, hello, council and mayor. Thank you, my name is Jennifer Driscoll, and I'm the Senior Library Supervisor of Children's Services, and we're so excited to have our winners here today to be acknowledged by you. So artists, as I announce your name, please come forward so we can acknowledge you, and then stay at the front for photographs. We also have the commendations that are going to be from the City Council today as well. Mayor, would you like to read what those say today?
I would. So to all the winners, this is in recognition of your artistic contribution towards the Glendale Library Arts and Cultures 48th Annual Bookmark Contest. Your artwork in this year's theme of "Level Up at Your Library" inspires other young artists by sharing your story of self-expression and highlights the connections we form through play and stories. We are honored to showcase your art in our libraries and our community. We commend your talents and encourage you to continue to engage your creativity and level up at your library through games, reading, and activities throughout the city of Glendale. We are grateful to have you be a part of Glendale Library Arts and Cultures Annual Bookmark Contest and an active reader and artist in our community.
Thank you. So for our winners, we have Caleb Okopnek Laitel. Gabriel Mangoba. Valentina E. Peña. Diego McGrannahan. Lim Jim Fatchian. Bennett Pak. Fiona Roach. Eleonora Hovanesian, excuse me. Kaia Wong. And Ella DeGodumer.
Congratulations, students. I'm going to ask my colleagues, Councilmember Asaturian and Councilmember Brotman, to come down and distribute the certificates to you. Are we in great order here?
I think we might be, close to it.
Were they tied? That's you, congratulations.
So who do I have? I have Lim Jim Fatchian. Is that you?
Kaia, that's you, congratulations.
You can hold it like this because we're going to take a picture. And then I have Bennett. Are you Bennett? Congratulations. And then, I bet this is you, Fiona.
Okay, let's get behind you.
And hold them all up like this.
Yeah, everyone face forward with your glasses.
Thank you so much, Ellen.
A pleasure. Step behind you, kids.
All right, guys, right up here. All right, right here.
All right, congratulations.
No, I don't. I'm not going to. And before we go on to the next item, which is Item 3C, I neglected to mention, as you can tell, we are missing Councilmembers Garpetian and Kasakian. Both of them are in different cities, out of state, advocating for the interests of the city before different organizations and boards. And I know you're going to miss them, but we miss them too. But this is the way it goes. Our jobs take us far across the nation, sometimes internationally, for efforts to promote the city of Glendale. Next, please.
Next is a proclamation designating May 2025 as Building and Safety Month.
Building and safety. Mr. Calver, tell us about Building and Safety Month.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian. Building safety, not building and safety, important distinguish, distinguish, uh, dis- distinguishment there. This is the 45th Annual Building and Safety Month.
Correction noted.
Building Safety Month.
Correction noted, thank you.
I'm still, you know, with the, the walk-up song.
Have we approved your budget yet?
You know what, I'm going to step back.
That's next week. Thank you, I'm sorry, Building Safety.
Building Safety Month. The campaign marks the connection between building codes and personal safety. It really also kind of acknowledges, recognizes the important work that our building safety professionals do. Now, I know that our Building and Safety Department, distinguishment, does receive some criticism, but we have been working hard to improve our timelines, to improve our customer service and our relationship with the community. As Councilmember Satrian has said many times, we are not done by any means, but we have made significant strides. But this year's campaign is really going to focus on how building safety impacts our daily lives. That's where we live, where we work, where we play. These are the professionals that make sure our buildings stay standing up. These are the professionals that make sure that they're safe for us to egress in case of a fire, that they're accessible to all users of all abilities. It also highlights the changes and improvements of those forthcoming within our permitting process, which I'll touch on in a minute. Does things like encourage preparation for natural hazards such as severe weather, wildfires, and earthquakes, and it also connects industry professionals to learn more about the rewarding careers that exist within this. In support of this campaign, this month, the city of Glendale will be sponsoring a number of different events. The first of which will be part of our youth education program. This is something we launched last year. We had a lot of positive feedback from students, from parents, and teachers alike. We'll be doing 21 presentations over four different Glendale schools and hopefully recruiting our next crop of building safety professionals. We'll also be hosting our Building There we go. Building Glendale Together Forum. This is an opportunity for professionals and those who have maybe gone through a permitting process to come and tell us a little bit about how we can do better, to give them an update on the things that we're doing as well. If you visit the website or Building and Safety page at glendaleca.gov, you can RSVP. That's going to be next Wednesday at 4 o'clock over in the Room 105 in the MSB Building. Additionally, we also host our Building Safety Month Celebration that'll be held out here in our plaza. It's a great opportunity to come meet some of the staff members that work with us, as well as the professionals within their industries. That'll be in Perkins Plaza, it'll be from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then lastly, in partnership with the Fire Department, we'll be conducting workshops, workshops with the community regarding building safety for homes and businesses. Throughout the month, you'll see some social media postings throughout the CDD Instagram's account, as well on the city's website. Last but not least, I would also like to take a moment to acknowledge all of those hard-working professionals within this group. These are permit technicians, plan reviewers, inspectors, some of whom may be standing here behind me today, including this very odd, tall, lanky man, I think we call him Nick. But these are our hard-working professionals who review your permits, conduct your inspections, are committed to the, the safety of our city. I would also like to acknowledge our colleagues within Fire, Public Works, Glendale Water and Power, as well as our Planning Division within Community Development, as really they are some of our first line of defense in terms of making sure our buildings are safe. So thank you.
Thank you very much, and I do have a proclamation. It's rather detailed, much like your codes, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut right to it. I'm going to get some concierge service and cut through all the red tape and state that the city of Glendale proclaims the month of May as Building Safety Month, recognizing the essential role of building safety professionals and up-to-date building codes in protecting our homes, workplaces, and infrastructure. Councilmember Asaturian, would you please do the pleasure of presenting?
Can I, can I say a few words before?
Of course.
All right. So I, I had seen the flyer for the forum earlier today that got posted. I'm very excited about that because I think it's something we've been talking about for a long time. If I can make one recommendation for one you guys are going to do maybe in the future is to include some more casual setting with some food. We've talked about this before, where if we're doing, you know, your regular government-style forums and meetings, less people tend to show up. When we do them a little more casually, an opportunity for us to interact, more people are willing to come out and engage. But I've said this time and again, I know I've been perhaps your biggest critic, but I'm also your biggest supporter. And I look forward to all the changes that you will be bringing forth, and it really starts with conversations with our community. So thank you.
I know what you did there.
Ara, please introduce yourself. You're very important in the department, but let everyone know who you are and what you do.
Mayor Najarian, congratulations. I didn't have a chance to congratulate another Ara here. Ara Sarkson, building official.
You're in charge of-
This is my incredible team, portion of my incredible team. Some of them were starting 6:30, then they, they are not here, but, so we make sure that the buildings are safe in the city of Glendale.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Any of the inspectors or the other staff? Would you like to say anything? Thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate your work. Okay, next item.
Next item is Item D, Proclamation Designating May 6th, 2025, as Arbor Day. And Mayor Najarian, we do have two public comments on this item.
Okay, very good. Let's, let's get the introduction of Arbor Day, and then we'll take the public comment afterwards.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of City Council. I'm Lauren Click, Urban Forester with the Department of Public Works. Just want to state that though I'm here with Daniel Hargrove, Assistant Director, this is a whole citywide effort for Arbor Day. This is going to be our 74th Arbor Day in Glendale. It's really a partnership with all the residents of Glendale who call us with their concerns, with their suggestions, with their compliments. And of course, every department in the city touches our trees, and also, we work really closely with all of them. So this is a special occasion for us because it's going to be our 41st Tree City USA designation. So I just want to highlight that it's 74 years of us celebrating Arbor Day. So we were doing this before the Arbor Day Foundation was doing their thing, and, and we're pretty proud of that, so.
Very good. Dan, any comments?
Only just, we, we really want to invite everyone now, just the council, the public, staff to come out and join us for the Arbor Day tree piling tomorrow in the Partridge Plaza.
Very good, and I do have a proclamation. The city of Glendale proclaims May 6th as Arbor Day, recognizing the importance of trees in improving air quality, enriching wildlife habitats, and beautifying our community. All residents are encouraged to support efforts that protect trees and woodlands. And I'm going to ask my colleague, Councilmember Brotman, to present this to you. Next one. Oh, we do have two speakers, sorry. Let's hear the public comment on the Arbor Day proclamation.
The first speaker is Alan Dish. You have three minutes.
Mayor Najarian, council members, thank you. My name's Alan Dish. Thank you for joining in the celebration of Arbor Day. While we honor trees today, I must express deep concern over a recent failure to protect them. The City Council's inability to intervene in the destruction of trees at Glendale Garden Homes, justified under newly drawn fire maps, sets a troubling precedent. In effect, a developer bypassed public oversight, cutting down trees without consequence. This loophole in fire safety policy now threatens urban greenery across private properties. This reflects a broader issue. Our approach to sustainability is skewed. Ambitious, costly projects like bike lanes and electric vehicles are prioritized, yet minor policy shifts to preserve existing trees are seen as utopia. This irony is stark. Those trees likely did more for climate action than many of our celebrated infrastructure investments. We must also reflect on how recent public protests, instead, instead of stalling harmful action, seem to have accelerated it. Following a major community outcry, the developer removed over 40 trees within two weeks, without the kind of deliberation we saw with other projects. This authoritarian speed of action is precise, is precisely what we need, but redirected in defense of environment. This leads me to my central appeal. The system's inefficiencies demand stronger, more decisive leadership. History shows that transformative leaders from FDR to now Trump have at times bypassed procedural gridlock to act boldly. We need such courage today, not to restrict freedoms, but to safeguard nature. Mayor Najarian, I appeal directly to you. You have a track record of standing firm in the face of opposition. From your decade-long fight against the 710 freeway expansion, to your enforcement of COVID-19 safety measures, to protecting open spaces through the ban on front yard fences, these moments show the kind of leadership Glendale needs now. On this and all Arbor Days, I call on you once more to act. As you have done before, declare an emergency amnesty on all trees in Glendale. Propose a revised charter or adopt Pasadena-style tree protections, or enact a bold new ordinance preserving our urban canopy. This is your moment to fulfill the true spirit of Tree City USA, not just symbolically, but with lasting impact. Thanks, my name's Alan Dish.
Thank you, our next and final speaker is Alan Durham. You have three minutes.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. My name's Alan Durham. A few weeks ago, I attended a city-sponsored meeting which addressed the removal of the 40 mature trees at Glendale Garden Homes. The upshot at the end was that there was nothing that the city of Glendale could do under its current ordinance to prevent removal of trees on private property other than protected species. It was stated that the Glendale Fire Department determined that the trees removed presented a fire hazard in a newly designated fire, high-fire hazard zone. It seems contradictory to remove trees in response to more extreme weather due to climate change and fire danger. Since tree removal increases heat, which increases climate change and extreme weather, this seems like a vicious circle that will only make fire danger more severe, not less. I know that the Sustainability Commission will be considering this issue going forward, and I urge the City Council also to give this issue more consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item is Item E, Proclamation Designating May 2025 as Older Americans Month.
We're gathering up our seniors.
Sure. Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
All right. Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, I'm Maggie Kavarian with the Community Services and Parks Department, and I'm honored to present to you our Older Americans Month activities and all the wonderful things we're doing this month to celebrate older Americans in the city of Glendale. We do have a gentleman here by the name of John Pearson, who is actually a former city employee, who used to be a project manager with our Parks Department. He is now a volunteer with Glendale, and he's working the city's River Walk projects, and he volunteers there. Along with that, we have nominated him for the LA County Older Americans Month Recognition Event, so he will be attending as a, our representative, older American, and that will be on May 22nd. We also like to invite the council to attend our Aloha Senior Services, Senior Street Fest event. This is our 7th annual Senior Street Fest. We're going to be doing it at Partridge Plaza. It will be a Hawaiian-style event, lots of fun, and music, entertainment, food, and many, many booths, vendors will be there. We also want to tell you about another great event that is being hosted by- We also want to tell you about another great event that is being hosted by the Los Angeles Dodgers. They will be sponsoring our lunchtime bingo for our seniors. They're going to be providing us with Dodger dogs and lots of prizes for them for bingo. And that'll be on May 19. So we're really excited this year. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Pearson, so he can accept the proclamation this year.
Thank you. I'm happy to have lived long enough to have this award. We have good volunteer work programs that will, in this park and Riverwalk, come out and pull some weeds with us sometime.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Nice to see you all. And we learned today that you're considered an older resident, once you hit age 60. Let that sink in. Anyway, we do have a proclamation. The City of Glendale proclaims the month of May as Older Americans Month, recognizing and celebrating the invaluable contributions and experiences of older adults and mayors in our communities. This year's theme, Flip the Script on Aging, encourages a fresh perspective that embraces aging as a time of purpose, growth, and connection. And I think I'm going to bring this one down. Okay, there we go. Congratulations. Thank you for coming to City Hall. John, are you the spokesman?
I apparently am.
Present this to you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. All right, let's take a photo. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes, we have a speaker, Mike Mohill, on this item. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. On May 26, I will be 83 years young. And I don't feel old. Just ask anyone who happens to read my newsletter every week or every month. Age is in your brain. In this room here are people in their 20s, 30s, 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s, maybe one or two 80-plus. Age is in your mind. I know you all would wish that my newsletter would be retired, but it's not. It's growing, and you'll see very soon how much it's going to grow, because I'm 83, I repeat myself, and I'm young. I'm not retired, don't have time to be retired. I'm always writing my newsletter. Ask anybody when they read it and say, wow, where does Mohill get this information? Well, guess where I get this information? I get this information from the community. So age is in your brain. There are many people who are younger than me, sit home all day long and watch TV or a newspaper. Maybe they go for a walk. But how many of them actually get involved with the community and do something on a weekly basis? Not many. So age is in your mind. It's how you feel. Don't be old. Don't sit in the rocking chair, watching TV, sleeping all day. There are people in their 60s are doing that. By the time they're 65, they've died in retirement. Working, keeping your mind straight, is not a liability, but is a positive effort. So Councilmembers, I know you're all probably half my age, and maybe you have my energy. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item.
The next item is Item F, Presentation by Metro Regarding Update on North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project.
Oh, we have one add-on to the... Hold on, Metro, hold on. We have one add-on for Public Service Recognition Week.
It wasn't...
Off the menu.
Okay.
It's an off-the-menu order. So is someone going to speak to this, or am I just going to get right into it? Okay, well, this is Public Service Recognition Week, and the City of Glendale proclaims the week of May 4 through 10 as Public Service Recognition Week, recognizing the dedicated public servants who tirelessly, across all departments, to strengthen the community and improve the lives of its residents. This proclamation honors their commitment, professionalism, and the vital role they play in making Glendale a safe, vibrant, and resilient city. And Mr. City Manager, am I correct in understanding you're going to receive this?
It'll be an honor.
On behalf of the organization?
Yes, sir, it'll be an honor.
It's my honor. Would you like a photo, or? Sure, let's go down and take a photo. My colleagues, come on. Leader of this great city. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now let's move on to the agenda item, 3F.
Would you like me to?
Yes, please, I'll read that into the...
Presentation by Metro Regarding Update on North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, thank you for having us here. My name is Tito Corona. I'm the Senior Manager of Community Relations with the North Hollywood to Pasadena Budget Bus Rapid Transit Project. I'm here to open it up because this project has quite a history. It's a 2016 Measure M project that was identified and shaped through the environmental process, where we went through the planning process, where we went to communities and discussed the project and see, you know, what people wanted to see in this project. And that helped shape it into what it is now, a project that both hits communities, residential, places of retail, places of where people work, people want to worship, people want to play, all things this project basically hits throughout the alignment. So that's where we are now. We are approaching a major milestone now in the delivery of this project. So with a new milestone, it calls for a new team as well to help deliver this project, and that's who's here today that I wanted to introduce to you today. But I did want to also acknowledge the level of effort and engagement that we've had with both community and with city staff in how this project is shaped, with how we further move into construction. It's been great relationship as far as receiving input from city staff on the many aspects of the project, and we appreciate the level of partnership that we've had with city staff. We are committed to additional engagement moving forward as we move forward into construction. We want to be present and be a part of the communities that we are serving. That's why it's important that as part of our presentation, you will see the types of engagement efforts that we have in our communications and in our construction relations program, also the types of programs that you'll see in the presentation to support businesses during construction, and then also additional information as to how we are shaping it through the design aspect as where we are today. So with that, I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge and appreciate the relationship that we've had with all the communities and cities along the alignment, and want to continue to grow on what we have now as we continue to deliver this project, as we are getting ready to deliver many projects for Metro and the county as we approach the 2028 Olympics. So this is one of many projects, but this is one of the first projects that we are moving forward in construction to be delivered as part of all these commitments that we have to our community and our stakeholders. So with that, I want to introduce, for the first time to the community, Matt Evans. He's our Community Relations Manager, who will be a face of the project, who will go over the next steps of the project. And at that point, it'll be followed by Anthony DeFrenza, and also our Area Manager for the San Fernando Valley, Stephanie Mullen. So with that, let me introduce Matt to present the next part, and I'm assuming this is for presentation?
Great. Thank you, Tito, and thanks for the introduction. Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. Like Tito said, my name is Matt Evans, serving as the Construction Relations Manager now for the North Hollywood to Pasadena Bus Rapid Transit Project, otherwise known, shorter as the NoHo to Pasadena, BRT. Again, today with me speaking will be the Project Manager, Anthony DeFrenza, who will provide some key design updates for you today, and we have our Area Manager, Stephanie Mullen, speaking tonight. So a bit of background, I know Tito touched on a lot of it, but a bit of background and a refresher, this project is using Measure M funds, SB1 funds, and the amount of $317 million. This project began, the scoping process, back in the summer of 2019. From there, we began developing the draft environmental document, where it was released in the fall of 2020. And then through that, it led our Board of Directors to approve the project in April of 2022. And right now, the project design is being advanced in accordance with that approved final environmental impact report by our Metro Board of Directors. The final note here on this slide is that, which we believe really highlights the need for a bus rapid transit, is that this corridor has 700,000 daily trips in this study area. And the corridor of the San Fernando Valley between that valley and the San Gabriel Valley is one of the most heavily-traveled corridors without a premium bus service, really highlighting the need for a specific bus rapid transit project. Here is the project map as it stands today. I'll try to walk through this with you from, let's say, west to east. This is a 19-mile corridor that touches on four cities. There's two communities of North Hollywood and Eagle Rock, and then in between, we have Burbank, Glendale, and the eastern terminus over in Pasadena at Pasadena City College. So from west to east, this will start at the North Hollywood Transit Center. Over in North Hollywood, the Bus Rapid Transit Line will travel south or onto Vineland Avenue in a center-running, dedicated bus lane configuration before it joins the 134 freeway and enters the city of Burbank along Alamina Avenue, and then along Olive Avenue, where it'll run in a side-running, dedicated bus lane configuration before it turns onto Glen Oaks and into the city of Glendale. When the line travels along Glen Oaks Boulevard, it will run along, or in the median, along Glen Oaks Boulevard, before turning onto Central Avenue into downtown Glendale and onto Broadway. On Central and Broadway, the majority of that route is a side-running, dedicated bus route, bus lane, and then it goes onto Colorado Boulevard through the city of Eagle Rock or the community of Eagle Rock, and then rejoins the 134 freeway before entering the city of Pasadena, goes through Old Town Pasadena, and then, like I mentioned earlier, reaches the eastern terminus at the Pasadena City College. Some of the objectives for this project, like I mentioned earlier, it is to provide a premium bus service between one of the most heavily-traveled corridors without a premium bus service, that's the San Fernando Valley and the San Gabriel Valley. We believe that this project will improve accessibility to those who need public transit the most. And as you can imagine, and you've seen through the project map on the previous slide, we do believe that this BRT line will improve transit access to major destinations, especially here in Glendale, downtown Glendale, with the Galleria, the Americana, and then also the major employment centers along the corridor along the way. You'll notice that it also provides a safe and reliable connection to the Metro A, B, and G lines. And then part of the passenger amenities as part of this project does include all door boarding, so passengers will be able to board in the front and back of the bus, and then the bus will have transit signal priority, which helps deliver a bus rapid transit project. Some of the benefits, we are anticipating that once this project does open at the end of 2027, to deliver a ridership of about 30,000 daily riders. We are also anticipating a peak travel time savings of up to 44%. 44%, that's compared to existing transit in the area. We promise to deliver service reliability and enhance the customer experience, part of the bus amenities that my colleague Anthony will get into later on. And we believe that all of this, because the bus is going to be quicker and provide quicker service, more reliable service, it's going to promote higher ridership as the years go on, reducing the number of cars on the road, reducing congestion, and improving air quality. And then, I'm going to bring up my colleague here in a moment, but Anthony will also touch on the fact that this project also includes improvements to bike lanes along the corridor, which effectively reduces the current conflict that we're having between cars, bikes, and buses. So with that said, I'll turn it over to the Project Manager, Anthony, who'll get into some of the more design updates as we get through the end of the year.
Thanks, Matt, and good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor Najarian. My name is Anthony DeFrenza. I'm a Deputy Executive Officer in Metro's Program Management Group and the Project Manager for the NoHo to Pass BRT. And I'm really happy to be here. I think I came about a year ago to counsel and reported on progress, and I was relatively new to the project then. But now, about a year later, we've onboarded our final design consultant, and they're quickly advancing through, towards 60% design with the ultimate goal of finishing the design by the very end of this calendar year or beginning of next calendar year. We've onboarded our CMGC, or Construction Manager General Contractor, firm, and they're helping us now with pre-construction services as we advance the design. We'll be potholing in the streets, hopefully in the coming couple of months, to provide necessary information to finalize the design and then ultimately start construction as quickly as we can get them approved design. So just to highlight on the Glendale section, as Matt indicated, the bus is going to run on Glen Oaks, adjacent the existing landscaped median. So the intent is to preserve as much of that landscaped median as possible by converting one of the three travel lanes to a dedicated bus lane. We're making enhancements to the bike lanes, which I'll talk about in a bit more detail, along Glen Oaks Boulevard. The bus then turns right onto Central Avenue, where it operates, crossing the 134 in mixed flow, and then converts from mixed flow to a dedicated side-running lane as it crosses through downtown, before continuing further east on Broadway, where it will operate in a side-running configuration. As was highlighted, we've had fantastic collaboration with all the cities along the alignment, and that includes Glendale, obviously. Through that collaboration, we are advancing the design and making refinements to the design. We submitted our 30% drawings a number of months ago, received city comments. We're incorporating those city comments as we advance towards the 60% design. And I go through that only to say that the city, in discussing and making comments on our design as it advances, is highlighting a lot of concerns. They're identifying issues with impacts to parking, impacts to traffic, and just general issues that they raise as they review the design. And what we're doing is responding to those comments and concerns in a way that we feel delivers on the project objectives defined by the Metro Board, delivers a high-quality BRT, and is responsive and compliant with the city's expectations. I'm having issues. Oh, there we go. So this is just a rendering of a center-running, median-running configuration along Glen Oaks Boulevard. The medians will be removed as you approach the intersection to accommodate the BRT stations and left-turn movements, but in general, as you can see on the screen, the trees and the landscaped medians in general are preserved, and the bus lanes run adjacent the median. This is a snapshot of the stations, but the median stations typically include a 48-foot-long canopy. They include station amenities, including LED lighting, seating, next bus... They include station amenities, including LED lighting, seating, next bus arrival information, and opportunities for art. The Metro Art Department is going to collaborate and commission artists for unique designs at each station, and those will be included in the back panels of our, of our stations. This shows the station most close to where we are now, at Broadway and Glendale Boulevard. And this is a sidewalk station. It's more constrained in, in the sense that we have an existing sidewalk width, we have local businesses, city facilities, and so we're shrinking the size of the station amenities and the station canopy to fit within the constraints of the existing sidewalk. So unlike a 48-foot-long canopy, I think the canopy locations on Glendale and Broadway are 36 feet long and 24 feet long for eastbound and westbound respectively. So I wanted to kind of go through the detailed process we went through on one specific design issue that's been the focus of a lot of discussion in the city of Glendale over our, our kind of design development process. So what I'm showing on the screen is the two configurations and, and how they changed from our 30% design concept to our 60% design concept. So in response to comments delivered during the environmental process, requesting bike lane enhancements, Metro committed to include bike lane enhancements along Glen Oaks Boulevard as part of their project approved during the environmental process. Initially, during the planning process, we thought providing those bike lane enhancements would be best by delivering Class IV or parking-protected bike lanes. And if you can see the picture on the left, the bike lane is adjacent the curb, and then the parked cars are moved to protect cyclists in the bike lane. As we worked through the impacts of incorporating those bike lane enhancements in that way, it became apparent that along a majority of Glen Oaks, enhancing the Class II bike lanes provide a superior product. And in going through that process, essentially, we considered lane width impacts, impacts to parking, and our ability to deliver safety improvements to the cyclists. So, so this diagram kind of shows that incorporating the Class IV bike lanes requires impacts to the available lane widths that are substandard. And so at our 30% design, the city made comments that the lane widths provided by the Class IV enhanced bike lanes weren't consistent with their standards. Additionally, the parking-protected bike lane causes impacts to parking. So by providing the Class IV bike lanes, in order to deliver safe sight distances, to keep cyclists protected when they're in the parking-protected bike lane, it's necessary to essentially eliminate a lot of parking. So this is a snapshot of Glen Oaks and Concord, and you could see there's driveways spaced at approximately 50 feet. The consequence of incorporating parking-protected bike lanes as the bike lane enhancement methodology essentially causes a significant reduction in parking along Glen Oaks. So as the design advanced from 30 to 60%, in collaboration with the city and incorporating comments, it was the Metro's design team's opinion that providing Class II, enhanced Class II bike lanes provided a better, was a better way to provide the bike lane enhancements that Metro committed to provide. But the conversation continues, and so I throw up this slide only to point out that our 60% design essentially shows parking-protected Class II bike lanes the length along Glen Oaks. But we continue to evaluate if there are sections, particular sections along Glen Oaks, that could serve as opportunities to still maintain Class IV or parking-protected bike lanes. So I, I kind of went through this long-winded process, just to describe that we are in very close collaboration with the city. We are attempting to be as responsive as we can be to the city's input and comments, while still maintaining true adherence to the Metro-defined project description. Metro decided and determined that it was going to provide bike lane enhancements. That's our intent, and we're working collaboratively to do that in the best way possible.
Let's enjoy him. Do you want him to finish the whole thing?
Well, Anthony, on your part, are you almost through?
I am. Matt was going to come back up. I only have two more slides. I apologize for being so long-winded. Matt was going to walk through the business, each shop play, business kind of benefit program.
Okay. Why don't you finish your two slides, and I'm going to pause for questions?
Perfect.
On the, the bike lane issues.
Of course, yes. I apologize for the long-winded nature of this presentation. So this is just a station rendering. Metro has adopted a system-wide design guidelines and a kit of parts, and so all of the BRT stations along the entire alignment in all four of the cities are intended to comply with that kit of parts. This design is still evolving, but this is the look and feel of the BRT stations. So like I mentioned, on, on the bike lane issue, collaborating with the city, I think we've arrived at a, a good approach, but we're continuing to evaluate whether or not that approach is the best approach. And we will continue that effort as we advance beyond 60% design. We're doing that same level of detailed collaboration and design as it relates to left-turn impacts along Broadway, as it relates to the transition from mixed flow as it crosses the freeway to dedicated lanes on Central. So there are a host of issues that the city has identified, that the Metro design team has identified, that we continue to collaborate on to make sure that the project approved by the Metro Board is delivered in a way that works best for the communities of Glendale and your respective partners along the alignment.
Okay. Let's pause and give an opportunity for some questions.
Welcome. You used the word collaboration a lot. Every other word was collaboration. Can you explain how you're collaborating in detail?
Sure. So we have, and have been hosting these for about nine months, I believe, monthly meetings with city staff, where the Metro design team runs through an agenda to discuss specific technical issues, ask questions, get status updates, transmit information back and forth. Those have been very effective. The, the counterpart, I guess, the assigned point person from the city of Glendale staff works for Public Works, and he's done a fantastic job of helping facilitate those meetings. We've presented, submitted, rather, our complete 25% design package, received city comments, and responded to every one of the city comments. We then submitted our 30% design package, which incorporated our best version of accommodating those city comments provided at the 25% level. We got comments on the 30% drawings. We've responded to those comments, and later this month, we're going to submit our 60% design package to the city for review. So it's through the, the combination of these monthly meetings and our design reviews.
So as an example, you pointed to the Class IV versus Class II. Your original had Class IV.
Correct.
And then you came back and said, we're going to do Class II. What was our staff's response to that?
I would say, staff made comments on the Class IV lanes, correctly pointing out that there was a significant impact to parking, and that the lane widths to accommodate that Class IV bike lane were substandard. And so our initial response to that was, what about this lane width configuration? We shifted things a bit, but it was still not in accordance with the recommended lane width, so it was different, but still substandard. And we summarized, totaled, communicated what the exact impacts to parking would be. It's about 200 stalls along Glen Oaks. And so then, we made the decision that because we weren't able to address the lane width issues adequately, and because there were significant impacts to parking, that we would present the 60% design with Class II lanes. And we have yet, sorry, enhanced Class II bike lanes. And we have yet to receive city comments on those because our 60% design seminal is still pending. It's coming later this month.
So what happens if staff or the city comes back and says, no, we want to stick to the?
Class IV.
Class IV that we originally agreed to.
Yeah, so if, if through this continued collaboration, the determination is made that the impacts of Class IV are worth, worth it, there's still absolutely the opportunity to, to do that. And, and what I guess I was trying to point out is, we think that there are certain blocks where Class IV just do not make sense, because the benefits offered by the cars protecting the, the cyclists aren't realized if there's a lot of driveways, because you have all of these right-turning movements that could impact the cyclists. So where we think we might end up is with enhanced Class II on certain sections along Glen Oaks, where there are lots of driveways, and then maybe on a few blocks where there are less driveways, it does make sense to go with Class IV. And so that's what we're evaluating now, and would, would propose that if the city has opinions one way or the other, that they, they make those as comments on our, on our 60% design seminal.
So I raise that because we all know that Glen Oaks also ha, is the street that has reckless driving issues, people are speeding on there, and just as even a resident, me thinking through, people are riding bikes without protected bike lanes on Glen Oaks. Raises my blood pressure, so I don't, you know, I, I am concerned for safety, and we take that seriously here. So I think when we are talking about collaboration, I believe it was last year, we had a meeting with the Metro team, I had asked to meet for communication and community outreach, and I know that you're going to get to that. But I will say that I'm fairly disappointed in not having seen anything from Metro since that meeting, where we thoroughly talked about the different portions and different segments of the community that needed to be communicated with. As part of your presentation, you mentioned 34 to 44% total time savings. How many minutes is that?
That's compared to existing transit options. I think from end to end, 70 minutes? Yeah, it's about an hour and seven minutes from end to end. I think it's 67 minutes.
Okay. And peak times are the peak periods that you've mentioned?
Oh, so the bus frequency will be during the, the peak periods, which I think are from around 7:00 AM to 10:00. And then in the evenings again, bus frequencies will be at 10 minutes on the BRT line.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have for now.
Okay, Mr. Brown.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And for my colleagues here, Anthony and I had a call not too long ago, and we had a detailed discussion about this issue on Glen Oaks. And, you know, no secret, I was also taken aback when I saw that we were, that we had moved off of the bike, the Class IV lanes to Class II. You know, it makes a huge difference, as you know, we all know, in terms of safety and comfort for, you know, riding on a Class IV bike lane versus a Class II. I do understand the trade-off with parking, and, and when we looked at some of those blocks, it is obvious that Class IV just doesn't work. We would lose 100% of parking on selected blocks, those are residential areas. And street parking is important, too. I mean, they're, they're trade-offs. So I don't, I don't want to be, and you know, because we talked about this, I mean, absolutist, you know, on this. But I do appreciate what you said about looking at the segment, you know, piece by piece, because in, there are those, like, like in the image you showed, I think it was Slide 12, you know, there are some, I think that's probably the worst, no, the one before that. You know, that block is probably one of the?
The worst.
The worst, right? That block, yeah, you can't take parking entirely out of a block like that with all these residents, right? But not every block is like this. So the idea of, like, I, I would just ask you to just really look very closely at how much we can get in terms of Class IV. What is, what parking loss would we be talking about? What is the parking utilization in some of those areas? Also, it's something we need to consider. And just do our absolute best to try to balance these considerations. They're both important. So that's, that's all. I'm just saying what you already know. And I appreciate what you're doing. I know this is hard, and you have a lot of jurisdictions you need to deal with. I think this is, this is going to be a benefit to the city and to the region for lots of different reasons. So I'm, I am excited, a little bit nervous, too, because some segments, I know, like, like Central, I know that there's very little real estate to do what we want to do, and there's some, and I think I said that we would, I would get back to you with some more detailed comments once the 60% design comes out. But there, there were a couple spots there where there's like a substandard parking, like seven foot, right next to a narrow bike lane with no buffer. I mean, I don't know how that works. You know, that is not safe, and we don't want that. So we're going to have to look really, really close, and I think we're going to have to look at some lane widths, we're going to have to look at the, the width of some of our turning lanes, and be a little bit creative there, so we can get to where we want to be. But I guess, you know, I'm not, I'm not sold yet, but I trust that you're going to do the right thing.
I appreciate that very much, and I will say, we've been getting some very, very high-quality comments from city staff, really along the entire alignment. And we have an expert team of design consultants working for Metro to deliver what we think is the best version of the project we can deliver. So that's our commitment. Like you said, there's always trade-offs, and we're doing our darndest to make that balance right, and we're taking input from the cities as that happens, with the intent of delivering a high-quality BRT service to the communities.
Yeah. And that, that Central, coming, coming from Glen Oaks down Central, that is, I'm a little nervous about that. I'm just nervous about how tight that all is with the volume of cars we have coming down there. I know we're going to do mixed flow up to the freeway entrance, right, or up to Doran?
Yeah, there's basically from Glen Oaks to either, and this is something we're still studying, either Pioneer, Doran, or Milford, it's mixed flow, and we're trying to figure out exactly where to make that transition in a way that impacts traffic the least. And so those are the details that I think through collaboration with the experts on your staff at the city will, will make the right call.
It's a little scary, but we know that there, there are bigger, you know, issues at stake here, so I think we'll.
Well, and the other benefit, I would just remind everyone, is along Central and Broadway, the dedicated BRT lane will be used by local Metro buses, Glendale Beeline, and any other municipal service provider that operates on that route. And there are a lot of buses on Broadway, and so this will improve service reliability and speed for the 180, portions of the 94, the 92. There's a whole host of lines that are utilized currently pretty significantly that will benefit.
Right. And you get a lot of weaving activity now, when you have a bus in front of you.
Yeah.
And it starts to slow down, you weave into the other lane. I mean, at least it takes that conflict out of the equation.
It does.
So that could be a benefit. Thanks.
Okay, keep going, Anthony, if someone else is up.
Yeah, let me flip to the next slides. So I just threw this slide up. Our intent is to open the service to passengers at the very end of 2027, so we believe we're still on target for that. And then just before I turn it back over to Matt, we awarded our Construction Manager General Contractor contract back in December of 2024. 60% design in May to the city, 85% in September, and 100% design, hopefully for approval at the, in the December-January timeframe. We're going to be doing potholing throughout the alignment, starting in June, so there's been some detailed coordination between our contractor and a city staff about pulling permits to do that work. And- And at least a week in advance of any of that type of work, canvassing would happen within a quarter-mile radius to let all the residents know about the short duration impacts associated with potholing. And then, like I said, we should open by 2027. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Matt.
Great, thank you, Anthony. So as Anthony mentioned, I'm just going to take you now through sort of the plan for upcoming construction relations and mitigation programs as it relates to this project. And I, I do want to begin by saying, we do recognize that since the project was approved in April of 2022, outreach in the community has been fairly minimal, minimal. But as Anthony mentioned, that ongoing coordination was still occurring through each jurisdiction as we advanced design. But once we reached 30% design, we knew that it was a good opportunity to come back into the community to present those 30% design updates, which is what we began doing in late March. And we do plan to continue those quarterly virtual community meetings through the end of construction, which will allow us to provide key design updates and, and key construction updates to the community. And again, as you see on screen, those will be virtual quarterly community update meetings. Our next one is scheduled for June, July, and that is in coordination with the 60% design submittal that we'll announce and provide updates on during that meeting. And then on a quarterly basis, we'll continue to hold those meetings to provide updates to the community. All of the project updates that we send out do go out through our very extensive email list that has been built on through the environmental phase and into the design stage. So we have several thousand contacts and email addresses that we send project updates out to. But that's just one program that we offer. We are starting to build out a full-fledged communications plan that we are happy to share with council to provide input on, where we do plan on, starting to attend informational booths at community events throughout the corridor, the 19-mile corridor. I know I've been in touch with staff. We do plan on attending some major events over the summer in Glendale, namely the Glendale Cruise Night and any other events in coordination with staff that we believe will be great for us to attend, to provide those key design updates and those construction updates as it relates to the, to the project. In addition to that, we will be scheduling some ongoing, ongoing onsite coordination with businesses along the corridor. If there are any design impacts to parking or any driveway impacts, that's something that will work out with the design team. Myself and Anthony will, will ensure that the businesses are well aware of any impacts during construction and, and through the design stage so that we have concurrence from them and they understand fully what to expect until we open up the project in 2027. As Anthony noticed, too, we are going to begin potholing utility exploration as early as June of this year. And our goal at Metro is to ensure that we do provide advance notice of any construction activity along the corridor. We do want to provide at least a week or two heads-up advance notice. And we deliver hands, boots-on-the-ground canvassing, hand-delivering notices to anybody within a quarter-mile radius of construction activity. And then we also do a courtesy walk with those construction notices, door-to-door outreach to any impacted businesses along the construction activity zone to ensure that they're well aware of the hours, times, and days of work that our crews are out there delivering and constructing this project. We also realize that along the 19-mile corridor, there's a lot of different language needs. So we, our goal right now is to provide all construction notices in all collateral in English, Spanish, Eastern Armenian, and Tagalog. So when appropriate, we will ensure that our construction notices have several languages on them when they are delivered to businesses and residents along the corridor. And that also leads me into some of the business support programs that Metro does offer. Went backwards there, but we have a revitalized Eat, Shop, Play program that does offer some new amenities, offerings as part of the revitalization. So what Eat, Shop, Play is, is we, Metro is now offering free coaching, business coaching, one-on-one marketing courses to businesses that are impacted by Metro projects that are going into construction, which means the BRT project by the end of the year. There are two projects right now that the Eat, Shop, Play program covers. That's the Eastern, East San Fernando Valley Rail Project and the D Line Extension Project through Beverly Hills and Constellation City Station. So though businesses within a quarter-mile radius of any construction activity are eligible to apply and enroll in the Eat, Shop, Play program. And like I mentioned, they do offer several different offerings, marketing courses, one-on-one coaching on how to increase your presence online. We also include the businesses in several different Metro channels, print media, digital media. We're even offering advertising on our Metro buses as part of the Eat, Shop, Play program. The Eat, Shop, Play program also includes four different categories. The Eat category, so any restaurants or dining is included in that. Shopping, so clothing stores, anything relating to shopping. Retail, Play, which is kids' activities, fitness. And then we have a service offering. So any businesses that offer services like insurance, things of that sort are also eligible to enroll in the Eat, Shop, Play program. To date, we have, or as of the end of April, we have 83 businesses enrolled. We do anticipate that number increasing as the BRT project goes into construction and businesses are eligible to enroll. Like I mentioned, any business within a quarter-mile radius of the corridor is eligible to enroll in this, completely free. And we do have staff dedicated to this program to provide that one-on-one marketing presence boost and free marketing. Whoa, that jumped ahead. I apologize for that. So with that said, I'm just going to bring up the Eat, Shop, Play program slide on here so businesses know how to stay connected to the program. They have a dedicated phone line and then an email address. Please reach out if you're interested in, if you are a business within a quarter-mile of the corridor to stay connected to the Eat, Shop, Play program and really take advantage of the offerings of the program. So with that said, I'm open to questions before we get into the next portion. If not, we're happy to answer questions at the end of the presentation. But I do want to quickly turn it over to my colleague, Stephanie Mullen, the area manager. She's going to touch on another addendum of the project, which is our First Last Mile program as part of the North Hollywood to Pasadena BRT project.
So, Stephanie, welcome. I'm going to ask you to be rather abbreviated in the First Last Mile plan and for the reason it hasn't even come to Metro committees. I know on Wednesday, it's, it's coming to the committee. So tell us generally about it, but don't, don't dig too deeply into it.
If you wish to receive and file it, I understand for saving time. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, I'm Stephanie Mullen, the area manager, and I am presenting on behalf of a colleague for First Last Mile. So I, I have notes, so we, we can be very brief. So staff developed the First Last Mile Plan for each of the sections, one in each jurisdiction in coordination with city staff through collaboration of CBO partners. You see here, the station studied. There were four highlighted stations. There we go. And the methodology and process for this schedule, the plan was prepared in alignment with the board adoption of First Last Mile guidelines with the following steps shown here in the slide. The scheduled milestones included existing conditions, analysis, walk audits, community engagement, and project list development. And the process culminated in comprehensive project lists for First Last Mile improvements to improve access to the four selected stations. We worked very closely with our CBOs and you see them listed here. We had 47 participants with our bike and walk audits, 240 at our pop-ups, community meetings. We had an additional four, 40 participants, and an online survey which generated 202 responses. It was really important for us to then go over those responses and also provide office hours. So there was collaboration there where we reviewed the pathways, maps, existing conditions, and engagement outcomes, and a project list and conceptual design review. Where am I? And then the plan resulted in a list of projects to improve safety and station accessibility for people walking, biking, and rolling that address a range of issues such as high-traffic speed, incomplete bike networks, and poor crossings and sidewalk conditions, among others. Broadly, projects include new or improved sidewalks and crosswalks, bus stop improvements, pedestrian lighting, lighting and shade, traffic calming, and various types of bicycle facilities to prioritize safety and comfort for all. Pedestrian projects are identified within a half-mile radius around each station and bicycle projects are identified within a three-mile radius, which aligns with the adoption of the 2021 First Last Mile guidelines. Lastly, cities are not compelled to implement these projects. However, if cities would like to advance projects, Metro is, has incentives and assistance available, and we will facilitate and support cities in this effort and support multi-jurisdictional coordination as needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we do have some public comment on this, so let's take that and then we can come back to council.
Yes, the first public comment is by Mike Mohill. You have three minutes.
My name is Mike Mohill. I took some random notes on this project and, you know, where are the public comments? They mentioned a couple right now. No one ever called me on the phones, hey, Mohill, I'd like to hear your opinion on this thing. I never got an appointment. Who are they speaking with? Bus ridership is actually low, isn't it, in this, in this county? Also, it's very unsafe bike, bus riding. No matter how much safety you all use, people don't want to ride the buses unless they're forced to it because of economic reasons, not because they desire it. They all want a car. We are a car society and you want to force us to ride the bus or bicycle to go shopping, go to work? 80% Glendale residents work outside of the city of Glendale to get to their job. You're going to slow down the traffic because you're going to have buses and bicycle lanes. We should not eliminate traffic lanes and car parking lanes. Ask Glendale residents. No survey. We are a car society. People look forward, when they, people, when they, kids, when they, when they become age 16, they can't wait to get their driver's license. Why? You don't hear they can't wait to get their bus pass, bus passes? But they want to drive their car because we want to be free. You're forcing this into, into us. This is America. This is not a dictatorship and you're making this a dictatorship by making people ride bus, ride buses. The way the bus system's sharing the lanes right now is fine. It's not broken. Why fix it? Your picture shows two lanes of traffic on Glen Oaks Boulevard. Will there still be two lanes of traffic when you get through with these buses? Are you going to take the, the medium and cut it in half? Will the people who live on those apartments off of Glen Oaks Boulevard, where are they going to park their cars? You know, when they, when, when they approved these apartments years ago, they didn't provide enough parking. That's why people park on the street. Where are they going to park? You know, these consultants, they'll park in their parking lots. They'll drive there. No comments. North Bran, the North Bran was the fiasco with the bike, with the bike lanes. Had we not learned from that experience? 76% of the people don't want bike lanes in this city. Read my lips. Thank you.
The next public comment is by Alec Bartrusov.
My name is Alec Bartrusov. I also serve on the Cities Transportation and Parking Commission, and I'm an urban planner. I would like to invite Mr. Mohill to come ride the bus with me during rush hour. He can join me on the 92 bus, which runs along Glen Oaks, to see that there are lots of people using the bus on a daily basis. I know in his mind, age is just the number or maybe doesn't exist, but there are a lot of senior citizens in the city of Glendale that use transit to get around. My grandma used to use the bus when I was growing up along Glendale Avenue. And for a lot of people where parents are working, that's the only way for senior citizens and kids to get around the city. So let's, let's nip that silly idea in the bud that nobody uses buses. I think, I want to thank Metro staff for giving this presentation. I think it was very well laid out, and I know that this project is going to be a huge benefit to the city in terms of transit. But I do have concerns about the active transportation aspects of it. I think adding a simple striped buffer to the existing bike lane on Glen Oaks is short-sighted. I think, as Metro staff had mentioned, city, the city of Glendale does have standards on lane widths. However, it is not the standard. There are many other cities, including Metro itself, that has various levels of lane width standards that is different from the city of Glendale. So I, I look forward to working with our Public Works Director and the rest of the commission and staff in reassessing those standards and bringing them up to current 21st century best practices where those widths can be reduced without compromising throughput because really a foot or two in design, in the design world, really makes a big difference. It's the difference between having a standard bike lane versus a buffered bike lane or a protected bike lane. And when you're using these really wide standards, whether it's for a driving lane or a center turn lane, it really hampers our ability to design really best-class facilities on our streets. So I'm hoping we can change that and through this design process, we can make some changes, again, without making, without any compromise to throughput. We can have a really truly great design that works for everybody, whether you're driving, biking, taking transit. So I look forward to working with staff and Metro on making those changes through this design process. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one caller. Emmanuel, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. So there are some issues going on here. First, who voted for this? It looks like Metro, with the coordination of others at other government levels, is imposing this project, whether we like it or not. Why not put it on a ballot and let the citizens of Glendale decide? Metro promises to take cars off the road and serve neighborhoods with this project while improving air quality. That seems rather overly optimistic. I mean, if you go to New York City, they have an infinite amount of options for public transportation, trains, bus lanes, bikes that you can rent, yet their traffic there on the road is far, far worse than what we have in the Los Angeles area. What incentives are there to even ride buses in our community, in this region? We have free parking everywhere. Our traffic is not nearly as bad as more congested parts of LA, such as on the West Side. And, I mean, I go to Eagle Rock, it's a quick, convenient 10-minute drive, I can park my car for free. So it's, considering just that, time, how much quicker it is, and the fact that there's free parking, there's very little incentive to take buses. And then I'd also point out that Metro has some PR issues. They have helped to bring crime, disorder, vagrancy on the West Side with their white rail project, as well as in Santa Monica. When I've been to Palisades Park, I got to look over my shoulder to make sure I'm not going to get mugged or something like that. And I would also point out, Metro's bus lanes on Alvarado between Wilshire and Sunset have caused massive congestion. They've made the trip twice as long and there's, it's causing more congestion, that's going to cause more pollution and worsen air quality. And when I get past Alvarado and get on the two freeway with its five lanes, I'm flying with, you know, no traffic at all. So basically, buses, they, they don't fit the lifestyle here. I, I don't know what folks are thinking. We just don't have the density, the conditions. We got free parking everywhere, we have gas stations, freeways. So it, it's like, I don't know, some people are, you're just out of touch. Thank you.
Thank you, and that is all for comments. Thank you, and that is all for comments.
This, I mean, there's no vote that needs to be taken tonight. But I just have a few comments. The concept of a premium transit line between Burbank and Pasadena is nothing new. This is something that was being discussed at the highest levels, when I mean highest levels, the mayors of Glendale, Burbank, and Pasadena, since the eighties were getting together to try and urge Metro to make this connection. They called it the missing link. And when I refer to, in the past, I'm talking about Larry Zarian from Glendale, Joyce Streeter from Pasadena. These are names you might remember, you might not, but they were decades ago. This BRT is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the people of Glendale and the neighboring cities to get a premium transit line. It's not gonna, we can't say, "Well, let's try it in a few years." It's now, or it's actually never. And for those who said this should be voted on, well, actually, this was voted on, specifically voted on, in 2018 with the Measure M ballot measure, which came before all the voters of L.A. County. And that was part of the quarter-cent sales tax increase. And the people of Glendale did vote for the passage of Measure M. In fact, it's a mandate that that BRT be done. If Metro were to say, "Ah, we don't want to do it," they're opening themselves up to liability, because that was actually on the ballot measure in 2018. So voting is important. But let's talk about the, the benefits to this. There's no one that can tell me that slowing doesn't need to occur on Glen Oaks Boulevard. It's a, you know, we have tried everything possible. Last week, we were talking about speed cameras. We've had helicopters flying up. We've had motorcycle cops up and down. The traffic on Glen Oaks has to be slowed down. Two lanes down from three is going to help that happen. And let's not even talk about Central. I'll invite anybody at about six or seven in the evening to have a coffee with me at Phoenisha Restaurant and watch these cars that are going so fast, you can't even determine what make and model they are, as they scream down Central Avenue. The BRT is going to provide some calming to the, calming to that. So I think this is a great opportunity. The bike lanes, you know, Metro says, "Well, we had to do the bike lanes." Well, that was me. I'm the one back in 2018 and 19 and said, "We have to include the bike lanes in this project." And they looked at me, "Really? You, you wanted bike lanes, Najarian?" Yes. Believe it or not, when bike lanes are appropriate, I support them. And I think they're appropriate in this design. And it certainly wasn't cheap either. It added significant money. I think just for Glendale alone, it was about $20 million in the whole process. So are there some bugs to be worked out? Yes. Do we want to give as safe a bicycle lane as possible? Of course we do. We need to work that out with the planners to find out where that can be done. Mr. Bartrosouf mentioned this lane, not discrepancy, but lane variations, which are accepted. I wasn't aware of that. I'm sure staff and Metro will look at that again and see if we squeeze a little bit, whether we can add an extra little bit of protection, that we could maybe add some protective measures on that bike lane if it's going to be a type-two lane rather than the type-four. And we'll look at going to type-four when there aren't driveways every, I guess it's 50 feet is the lot size. So I appreciate your commitment to Glendale, to working with our staff, to continuing the outreach in all the methods that you described, and in any other way that may come from council. You may get a call from our city manager that says, "Councilmember Sotirian had this idea on additional outreach. Can you implement it?" I, I hope you keep your mind open. And I'm just picking you because you're good at outreach, that you implement that and try to accommodate us. And we hope we keep that, that position. The great thing is, this will connect our residents on a limited stop, express, bus. Signals are going to be turning green as it comes up. Only between here and Pasadena, four stops, if I'm not mistaken. Between here and North Hollywood, maybe five or six stops. It's going to tie you into the entire Metro system. Go to Dodger Stadium, go to USC, go to Long Beach, go to Santa Monica, wherever you want to go. Our residents are going to be tied in. So I see it as a plus. Councilmember Sotirian.
I'm just going to speak through the community outreach again. One of the documents that your consultant prepared, as part of your documents, the priority level on the community outreach for Glendale was moved to low priority. I'm officially requesting that you take a look at that and how we work together to make it a top priority. I said it in the meeting, and I'm going to say it again here. Glendale is different, and we have a different set of expectations in reaching our diverse communities exactly where they're at. And our hope is that as we move through this project, this project is embraced, and we're taking in the input from our community members. And so I know part of that also, discussion also included coordinating with our Economic Development Department for the business program, because the cookie-cutter approach, it does not work, especially with immigrant communities and communities with language barriers. You can't just send them an email and expect that they're going to sign up or they're going to know how to navigate the system to, to take advantage of what you're offering. So I look forward to working with you.
Yes, Mr. Brock. Little comment, just in reference to some of the things we heard from the speakers. We had a session this afternoon where we, we discussed a detailed survey that was done of Glendale senior citizens. And one of the things we learned is that 30% of seniors don't drive. They get around on, by transit, walking, or they get somebody else to drive them around, or they just stay home and suffer the, the epidemic of loneliness that we are trying to combat. So transit is important. And I know that, you know, for many of us, we, we see the world through the windshield of a car, and we, we live in that bubble, so to speak. But it is a bubble. 30% seniors don't drive. And the other interesting fact from the U.S. Census data is that 14% of Glendale households have no car whatsoever in the household. Okay, think about that. 14% of people are disenfranchised when we say we want to build our, our environment totally dependent on automobile travel. Okay? We want to build a system that accommodates everybody, that makes everybody, gives everybody an opportunity to participate in our society. And that is something I feel very strongly about, and I will consistently fight for.
Thank you. I mean, and not to mention, these are going to be electric buses. The city isn't going to pay for the stations, correct? No, that's on Metro. Typically, the cities, municipalities are responsible for their bus stops. And the Olympics are coming, and they're going to be Transit First Olympics. So promise that if we ask you to come back, you'll come back and answer additional questions or give us updates. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's patience in this item, which was a little bit longer. I appreciate your presentation, and carry on. Okay, we are on consent items. And Madam Clerk, would you please read those into the record?
Yes. Item first, consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed. Mayor Najarian, we do have one speaker on item 4D.
Okay, would someone like to move the balance of the consent calendar?
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadriyan.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes.
Garpetian, Kasakian, Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Read 4D, please.
4D is Community Services and Parks Regarding Elderly Nutrition Program Amendment Number Three with Los Angeles County Aging and Disabilities Department for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. One motion to approve acceptance of $15,000 in Los Angeles County Development Authority Committee Development Block Grant funding for the elderly nutrition program from the Los Angeles County Aging and Disabilities Department for Fiscal Year 2024-2025, EMP, and authorize the city manager or designated to execute Amendment Number Three of the subaw, subaward, EMP 242505, period July 2024 through, through June 2025 to accept and implement funding. Two, resolution of appropriation to appropriate $15,000 in LACDA CDBG funding to purchase emergency kits for EMP C2 Home Delivered Meals Program participants.
Okay, please call up the speaker.
The speaker is Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
Yeah, my comment sort of relates to my, my great interest in the city agenda, giving a little bit of context for people, because I don't know how much is spent for elderly nutrition. So my, I'm assuming this is just a small portion, because if it's $15,000 and it's $10 a meal, you would help 1,500 people with this. I'm, I'm assuming maybe there's something in addition to this, or not in addition to this, because this afternoon at the Housing Authority meeting, the presentation, there were 50,000 seniors. So if the food insecure were, I'm not sure if I remember, I think it's 11%, that would be 5,500 people, and this would help 1,500. I mean, I'm, I'm only up here because I don't know how much is typically, you know, allotted for helping people be able to eat, the elderly. So if that was included in the agenda, I know that, I found out that it's actually the city attorney's office who puts together these agendas. It would just be so fantastic if we had a little bit of extra information, even a sentence of context, so that people could understand the ramifications of what some of these items mean. Because if I'm up here saying, "Well, you're only giving $15,000," and it ends up being, "You gave $100,000," then, you know, this, this point is, my point is moot. But it would be really wonderful for people to have this, this information, because I've even contacted the Glendale News Press, who doesn't want to publish the agendas, for some reason, that they gave silly reasons. But one of them is, you know, that they'd have to sort of put it in context. They'd have to translate it in, in, in English for everybody to understand. But this would be something I would be interested to know. What is the actual number, so that I could say whether this would be, you know, this is a paltry amount, or, or, or otherwise? That's it. Thank you.
Okay, and just for the record, the information is contained in the report on 4D. If you go to the website and you click on item 4D, it will show you the report button. Hit the report. And so in answer to your question, which is a good question, it says, "This funding will enable the city to provide up to 80 emergency kits to homebound seniors that include 72 hours' worth of emergency food, water, wipes, a blanket, masks, sanitizers, flashlight, a light stick, a poncho, ties, glove, a whistle, and additional items." No, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you. So not everything is included on the agenda item. The agenda item is a brief summary of the issue that's going to be discussed. Behind that agenda item are the reports, the detailed reports, that have many different components to it. Fiscal impact, an executive summary, stakeholder outreach, analysis, recommendation, environmental review, et cetera.
Yeah.
So in general, it's not in the agenda item, clearly. But behind it, you have to dig a little deeper. Is there a motion for 4D?
I'll move the item.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asadriyan.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes.
Garpetian, Kasakian, Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next is item five.
City council and staff comments.
Councilmember Sotirian.
Sure, I'll go first. I see our interim fire chief, Brooks is in the back, if I can have him come up. We had a pretty long list I had to go over last week, and so I wanted to keep it brief. But last weekend, we had the kickoff and launched our Women's Fire Academy, which had about 60 women between the ages of 18 and 24 that participated. I wanted to give Chief Brooks an opportunity to briefly talk about that and say thank you. And to the Pasadena Fire Department for partnering with us. I had the privilege of attending both the opening and the closing, and had a chance to speak to some of the women that were part of it, who were excited to see what's ahead. Also, this weekend is Fire Service Day, and so, Chief Brooks?
Sure, Councilmember Sotirian, Mayor Najarian, Councilmember Brockman. Yeah, first, Women's Fire Academy, really a great opportunity. Women have been historically underrepresented in the fire and emergency services. So the goal of this was to provide an opportunity for young women to come out and see the availability of careers to them. We had folks from fire prevention to firefighters serving in that capacity, as well as inspectors. Really, a wide gamut of opportunities available to women. Day one, they got to do all the activities that they would do in the day of a firefighter, from physical fitness to search and rescue to vehicle extrication. And really, again, to highlight the availability and show how available this career is to women. That was done in conjunction, as you said, one, with the support of this council and city staff, in conjunction with the city of Pasadena and the Pasadena Fire Department. Great opportunity, amazing feedback we got. And again, I always say, as a girl dad, it's a great opportunity to know for our kids to be able to see what's available to them. To your next point, Fire Service Day this Saturday. Great opportunity to come out and really see what the fire service is all about. For the Glendale Fire Department, it's our biggest public education event. Starts with a pancake breakfast. Again, it'll be Saturday, May 10th. Great day before Mother's Day, bring mom out. You can have free pancake breakfast. Really, you can tour the fire station, see fire apparatus. Kids can climb around on those. Our partners from GPD bring over the SWAT Bearcat and other police motorcycles, cars. But really, again, an opportunity for the community to come out and see what we're all about. We'll be cooking pancakes. We'll have demonstrations. But really, a full, full day of activities for the kids. The youth can come out and spray water with a fire hose. But again, we think probably our, our biggest outreach event really opens the doors of the public to see what we do.
Thank you.
That's May 10th?
May 10th, this Saturday.
This Saturday? What time does it start?
9:00 a.m. start, goes until 2:00 p.m. Pancakes will be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
That's where you take the Jaws of Life.
Exactly. You'll see that. We'll do two different demonstrations during the day.
With the saw and the, okay.
So really, again, just a great opportunity for the public to come out and see what we do.
That's a lot of fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Also want to say thank you to our community development, economic development departments for putting together another successful small business summit this last week. We had over 500 businesses attend, and I'm thrilled to see this event grow year after year. The entire embassy suites was buzzing on both floors. And I think from the looks of it and the conversations with staff, we may have outgrown that space for next year. As, just to be transparent, also want to bring up that about a month ago, I had a meeting with the general manager and CEO of California Bears, who is interested in bringing an ice center to the city of Glendale. This is something I've also talked about with some of the folks that are organizing the ice skating at Pickwick when Pickwick was being discussed last year and the year before. I have, since then, provided the initial proposal to staff for them to communicate with the proposers. I also recommended to them that they also connect with the Ice Skating Association for us to see if this is something that we can bring to Glendale. I think it'd be wonderful for us to have such a center that would not only generate revenue for our city, but have a great place where the kids go ice skating. I know I take my nephews to Pasadena for their classes. And with the way things are at Pickwick in Burbank, this is a great opportunity for us to build something and bring something great to the city of Glendale. And then lastly, our police chief emailed out the annual report for the police department earlier today. I had an opportunity to skim through it. Just want to say thank you to him and to our entire police department. our entire police department for all that you do. And I would appreciate if we can add a near-future meeting, have a short report that Mr. Sidkin or Chief Sidkin present. I think it's worthwhile for the community to know all that our police department has done for public safety, because there was a lot in there.
Thank you.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for Mr. Brotman. I just have a few. First is, I was at, with my colleagues, at the Kiwanis Duck Splash. It was a lot of fun. My deputy mayor, Edward, my grandson, had a great time. He got to think that he was pulling the sluice open, I guess that's the word for it, to send the ducks down. And the Kiwanis do a lot of great work for our youth in the city, and it was, even though it was a little bit misty, it was a great day. The next thing is, I'm going to ask that the invocation duties be passed on into the city manager's office, and I'm asking that you attempt to invite members of the clergy, other spiritual leaders, laypersons, elected officials, community representatives, including students or residents of notoriety, to participate and to issue the invocation, in accordance with the, of course, restrictions on the First Amendment and separation of church and state and all those sort of things. So let that begin. That doesn't mean the city clerk can't do one, you can include her in the rotation as well, but I'd like to get some diversity in the invocation duties. And that's all I have. Is there anything that staff, was that the announcement that the fire department wanted to make, Madam Asatrian?
Yes.
That's what you wanted to do? Okay.
And, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
I think this is the second time I'm hearing it, but staff shouldn't have to turn in cards to speak, right?
Oh, they shouldn't.
Right, okay, I just want to make sure that...
No, that's, so they would be under staff comments?
Okay.
So...
Okay, great.
Yeah. Let's move on. And are there any staff comments aside from what has come forward? Okay, let's move to the next item.
The next item is committee event announcements, three minutes, five-speaker limit. For mayor policy, this item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general oral communications, subject to the three-minute time limit. Discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. We have five speaker cards. Our first speaker is Alan Durham. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Do you have my slide? It's the fire meeting?
No, you had it before.
If not, I can just... Thank you.
Mayor Najarian, members of the council, I'm Alan Durham. The Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association is sponsoring a community meeting this Thursday on May 8th on wildfire preparedness. It will be at Bran Library starting at 7:00 PM. Speakers will include our police chief, Manuel Sid, interim fire chief, Jeffrey Brooks, and our city manager, Rubik Kalanian. CalFire's new fire danger maps have really expanded the number of properties in Glendale that are now designated as being located in high fire danger zones. Being located in such zones triggers city inspections and mandated brush clearance. So that will be one of the topics discussed on Thursday. Again, it's a community meeting this Thursday, May 8th at 7:00 PM at Bran Library. Everybody's welcome to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is by Tony Passerola.
Good evening, council and staff, Tony Passerola. Suzie, could you pull up that video, please?
Sure. Let's do this.
That's it.
A small-engine airplane carrying three people crashed in Boca Raton, Florida. The FAA said three passengers were onboard the plane.
Let's try this again.
...crashed in New York City's Hudson River, killing all six people onboard.
Thank you, Suzie. Mr. Brotman, this one's for you, if you're paying attention. That was a North Shire in Scotland eco-friendly battery recycling plant. The amount of toxins released into the atmosphere is equivalent to 1,000 purely-regulated diesel trucks driving nonstop for 10 straight years. Some of the toxins into the atmosphere are hydrogen fluoride. This is highly corrosive and toxic gas that can severely damage the respiratory system if inhaled in significant amounts. Carbon monoxide, a colorless, odorless, and poisonous gas that can cause headaches, nausea, and even death, especially at high concentrations. Heavy metals, lithium ion batteries contain various heavy metals, including lithium, cobalt, manganese, and nickel. These metals can be released into the atmosphere during a fire and can contaminate the environment. Mr. Brotman wants to put a bunch of electric scooters on the streets of Glendale. We're going to talk about that later, right? I mean, you're going to bring that up. So I'm going to see how that goes with the council, and those batteries are going to end up in these recycling plants. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Nick Douglas.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing me. My name is Nicky Dukas. I am the artistic director of the Antias Theatre Company, and I want to start by thanking the council for your support of us over the years. For those of you who are not familiar with us, we are a professional theater, classical theater company, just down the way on 110 East Broadway, across from the Americana. We're a small, intimate space, 80 seats, and there's not a bad seat in the house. We're a classical company. Every year, we produce a Shakespeare play, a world classic, and an American classic. And just last weekend, we opened our production of The Glass Menagerie by Tennessee Williams. We're also a company that is dedicated to education, and we do that in a number of ways. We have a relationship with Glendale Unified School District. We do six student matinees a year. We send out teaching artists to the schools to prepare them for our productions. The students come, have lunch in our lobby, enjoy a show, have a Q&amp;A with the actors, and we send them home with a beautiful study guide, full of photographs and questions they can consider. Of these students, about half of them have never been to see a play before, and we are quite honored to be their first theater experience. We also have one of the most extensive theater libraries in Southern California, full of plays and histories, biographies, and we are currently cataloging it. And soon, if you have a Glendale library card, you can borrow plays from our library, from the main library, which is just about a block away from our theater. Finally, we teach classes, not just to professionals in the community, but we have many classes for community members, because we believe that when people are more familiar with classics, plays, they will believe, like we do, that the classics are relevant to us today, just as they were the day that they were written. We've been a company for 35 years, but we moved to Glendale only seven years, eight years ago, and I'm in the lobby every performance. Just last weekend, we welcomed people as far away as Santa Barbara and Santa Monica. They come, they shop, they have dinner. And what I'm most concerned about, particularly as a resident of Glendale, is that so many people in Glendale don't yet know we're here. So I'm very, very grateful for this time today to introduce ourselves to the community. Check out our website, we would love to see you in our theater. Thank you so much.
And how do you get tickets?
How do you get tickets?
Yes.
We have a slide here with our website. You can go on there, or you can call us, and we'd be happy to help you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Next speaker.
Mayor Najarian, council members, staff, good evening. I'm Edith Fuentes, board member of the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale and the Glendale YMCA. With me, thank you for sticking around, is our board member, Ida Rasper, and Mike Rasper. We are here to invite all of you and the community at a building and fire safety at home in place of business workshop. It's going to be on Monday, May 12th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, at the main lobby of the Glendale YMCA. This is in collaboration with Glendale Fire Department and Building and Safety. And speaking of Building Safety Month, this is one of the programs, outreach programs that we do, free and open to all for the community. So we would like some of our residents and businesses to learn about awareness, safety tips, preventions, and knowing the risk of not having annual checkups and, you know, some other protective and fire safety at your place of business and home, protect your family and your employees. So we hope everyone will be able to join us. You can drop by and come and learn a few things about safety, fire and building safety, again, on Monday, May 12th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, at YMCA main lobby, located at 140 North Lewis Street. It's free and open to all, and we hope we'll be able to help and save some of our residents in having fire risk and safety issues. Thank you very much, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you for putting this on. We appreciate it. Thank you for waiting this evening.
I know. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Mohill.
My name is Mike Mohill. I'm going to talk about a few random things that came up this evening. First of all, you spoke about the fast drivers on Glen Oaks Boulevard, and all the fast drivers. Well, I have a lot of Armenian friends, and they're all fast drivers. You know, isn't that the truth? Is not our insurance on our cars high because of the drivers in our city? Mr. Najarian, Asatrian, you're active in the community, why don't you get your people to slow down? I'm not a racist, I have Armenian friends, but it's the truth, isn't it? It's the truth. Armenians love to drive, and they get an opportunity, not only on Glen Oaks Boulevard, but the 134 freeway. I know, I've been bypassed by them. Okay, number two. Mr. Najarian, you wouldn't let me make a comment about the firefighters when the chief was up here. I have a question. Were the standards for the women in the fire department, were they lowered, or as high as they are for men? You know, when President Trump was shot a few several months ago, the secret service were short women. They couldn't even cover the president that they were guarding. Remember that picture on TV? So my question to the fire chief is, the job you want to perform, are they standard? Are they tall enough? Are they strong enough? Or have you had to lower the standard? Okay. Now, Glendale budget and the future. Council puts Glendale taxpayers more in debt in future liabilities than any other council before. The Green New Deal in Glendale is doing wonderful. It's costing Glendale taxpayers thousands and millions of dollars. We have electric utilities, electric cars, electric trucks, solar panels that end up in the landfills. This is our Green New Deal in Glendale. We don't want it, you're forcing it down our throat. In the last 10 years, Glendale Fire Department budget has increased by 43%. Let me repeat myself, 43%, which is 10 times more than inflation. Local firefighters, on average, make more money than the average policeman, which has a more dangerous job, and 20 times more than the US Marine. We are not... Okay, that's it. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. But you did remind me, I appreciate your comments, that we have our first budget study session on Thursday, starts at 9:00 AM. You can tune in, or you can come in person. This session is going to talk about the overview, about our general budget situation, and not get into the specific departments. So if you want to see how our budget is doing, please tune in, and...
I've seen the results.
Of course, you're invited to ask questions.
I've seen the results over the last four years.
Thank you. A vote of confidence. Yes.
On those two, first two items, may God help you. So I'm going to leave it up.
Okay. Any other speakers, or is that our five?
That's the five.
Okay, we are going to take a short recess, ladies and gentlemen, because there's only three of us, and one can't step out without the meeting coming to a halt. So five-minute recess, stretch your legs, and we will see you at 8:15. So five-minute recess, stretch your legs and we will see you at 8:15. We're back from our short recess at city council. We just concluded item six on the agenda and what is the next item?
Action items, A, Glendale Water and Power, regarding Glendale Water and Power Energy Risk Management Policy and Trading Authority Policy.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council.
I'm sorry. One, motion approving amendments to the GWP Energy Risk Management Policy; two, motion approving amendments to the GWP Trading Authority Policy.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council. This is an annual trading and risk management policy update. It's a rather unexciting topic, but allow me to introduce Matt Curtis, our utility risk manager, who is making, is going to make the presentation and please be nice to him.
Can you hear me okay?
Do we need a presentation? We don't need a presentation. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
We don't need a presentation if you don't need one.
Mr. Brotman.
I mean, not for me, I don't need it.
I'm not.
Yeah, I don't need either.
Can you, for the sake of the public, can you summarize in two minutes what you would maybe plan 10 minutes to tell us about?
Yes, okay. The annually, the Glendale Water and Power Energy Risk Management Committee reviews and evaluates Glendale's water power's risk policies and recommends necessary updates in response to changes in the energy market that affect GWP. The recommendations are made to clarify policy language, align policies with any organizational changes. Updates to the Energy Risk Management Policy and/or Trading Authority Policy must be approved by city council. The current Energy Risk Management Policy and Trading Authority Policy were approved by the city council on August 9, 2022 and we are presenting amendments to those policies for consideration by the council to take effect. And I can just summarize what those policies are. The GWP Energy Risk Management Policy establishes the framework to manage the risks that are inherent in the wholesale energy operations and markets in which GWP participates. And then for the Trading Authority Policy, the GWP Trading Authority Policy defines the authority granted by the city council to the city manager and GWP general manager to execute energy-related transactions and to delegate Trading Authority to staff. And these amendments that we are proposing will help us continue with, implement best practices to continue those operations.
Very good, very good job. Are there any speakers on this item?
Do we have speakers? No, we do not.
Any questions or a motion?
I don't have any questions, just wanted to say thank you and I know for my part went over the changes that are being made in this iteration of the policies during our briefings. They are fairly small changes, kind of just adjusting to organizational changes and a few other small things. Nothing that I think is very exciting, but something that we have to do. So yeah, I'm comfortable and I will move our adoption of both of the policies, Energy Risk Management Policy and the Trading Authority Policy.
Thank you.
And I'll second the motion and that were very nice despite popular belief and welcome to the Glendale family.
Okay, thank you.
Let's take roll call, please.
Council members, Asadurian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Carpetian, Kastakian, Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Let's go to 8:00 p.m.
Glendale Water and Power, regarding Glendale Water and Power Water Master Plan Communications and Outreach Plan. One motion to note and file Glendale Water and Power's Water Master Plan Communications and Outreach Plan, subject to additional council member comments thereon.
Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council, to support the Water Master Plan that's currently in the works. GWP has developed a community and outreach plan, essentially to educate residents, engage stakeholders, and foster public trust in recycled water initiatives. That's the gist of the report. I'll turn it over to Chizem Obegolu, our Assistant General Manager of Water, to provide you a little more detail.
Yeah, thank you, Rubik. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council. As mentioned, and you may recall, late last year in December, your council awarded a public service agreement to Arcatis Engineering to assist us with the comprehensive water master plan. As mentioned, this plan will inform, educate the public and engage the public on how, but more importantly, why we're undertaking this master plan. And so through our contract with Arcatis Engineering, they have partnered with Katz and Associates to... and Katz and Associates is a community relations and communications firm, prominently known here in Southern California, to help us with that initiative. And so I do have their senior director, Mrs. Anne Newton, to provide a full report on this outreach plan. But before I do pass it on to Ms. Newton, I just wanted to provide a very brief update on the status of the master plan, starting with some good news. We have actually been awarded a grant funding from the California State Water Resources Control Board in the amount of $200,000 to go towards the recycled water assessment. And so just to contextualize that, the recycled water assessment will cost 500K and so this grant will cover about 40% of that cost. The assessment is well underway. We anticipate to have that complete by this fall and November and which we will bring back to your council to present, as well as the potential rate impacts. And so with that being said, I will go ahead and pass it on to Anne to talk about the public outreach plan.
Thank you so much. Hello. Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you so much for having me. As mentioned, I'm with Katz and Associates. We're a public outreach and engagement firm. We primarily focus on water, infrastructure, environment, transportation. And I'm just really excited to be working here with Glendale. I'm a former resident, I lived here for about 10 years and now I'm in Burbank. So I'm excited to be working within the community. Let me just see here. I'm just going to provide a brief overview. How do I get this going? There we go. I'm going to provide a brief overview of the plan that we put together that I believe you have seen. The Communications and Outreach Plan outlines our strategic approach to inform, engage, and educate Glendale Water and Power customers throughout the recycled water planning process. The objective is to increase public understanding of the value of water, the importance of long-term planning, and the need to make investments in our local water infrastructure. Through consistent messaging, clear educational materials, and inclusive community outreach and engagement, we aim to build trust, promote transparency, and support informed decision-making that benefits all Glendale residents. Audiences, as mentioned, we want to be as inclusive as possible. So just here on the screen are, you know, the list of the wide range of audiences that will work closely with GWP to ensure that we engage with throughout this process. Key messaging, our key messages will serve as the foundation of our materials, our outreach, and ensure clear, consistent communication. These are designed to inform, educate, help build trust, help answer questions by explaining the, again, the purpose of the planning effort and the importance of the steps that Glendale is taking. As this process moves forward, we're going to be nimble, not only with our outreach planning, but our messaging and make sure that we're adapting to reflect new information, community feedback, and other recommendations. We'll make sure that we, you know, stay relevant, transparent, and responsive throughout this process. Within the plan itself, you would see more in-depth messages. These are just the highlights of the themes. Sorry, it seems slow for me. Research, research is a really fundamental component of what we do. So we, Katz and Associates, of course, do our own research. We're, you know, gathering information, looking at what's been successful in terms of engagement and outreach in the past. One of the critical things that we do is we conduct one-on-one opinion leader interviews. So we'll work with the city to identify, you know, it says 15 here, but you know, roughly 15, 20, give or take, key opinion leaders and community members to have in-depth conversations, to hear more about their awareness, their concerns, their questions, their input, and uncovers, you know, potential issues and challenges. It's, again, these are really more in-depth conversations and not representative of all of the outreach being done, just a small snapshot. Public opinion research. So GWP has actually now also engaged with Probowlski Research and a public opinion research firm that we've actually done quite a bit of work with as well to do a public opinion survey and focus groups. So this is a statistically valid representative sample. The survey will ensure that it is reflective of your community and then we are able to use what they learned through the survey and through focus groups to inform the steps that we're taking, how people like to get information, where they're getting information, what they already know, what they want to know more about, and things like that. And again, my understanding is we're doing both survey and focus groups. Content development, I'm not going to spend too much time here. It's pretty straightforward, I don't need to tell you what a fact sheet is. But, you know, our approach generally, we want to be highly visual. We want to communicate in a way that people understand and that is interesting to them. So we're a full-service, you know, we're a full-service firm and so anything that's needed, whether it's a video, infographic, poster, boards, we do it all. Oh, and I do just want to mention that, you know, all of our materials will be translated and will be consistent with what GWP in Glendale do. Is it me?
Point it maybe back with the...
I really appreciated hearing earlier your discussion on outreach and making sure that we do it differently and that is our approach as well. We aim to meet people where they are. Yeah, you can. You know, we do not expect that people, you know, not even close to everyone within a community can go to an evening public meeting. For example, people have a lot on their minds, they've got a lot of different priorities. So we are big advocates for going out into the community and going where people already are. And on water, I've been communicating about water for 20 years now. It's hard to get people to engage on this issue. You know, as long as it's coming out of their tap and it tastes good, you know, it's one of those things that can be taken for granted. So we work really hard to make sure it's easy for people to engage on this issue. Just a couple of examples of some of the things that we're recommending. Creating a stakeholder advisory group, we talked with staff. We know this has been a successful tool for you all in the past. So we will incorporate that into our outreach. Again, it's by no means, you know, the only thing we will do, but having some open houses to create some of that dedicated time for people to go more in-depth on key issues and updates. We can incorporate those as well. Pop-up outreach though, you know, this is cruise night, this is... Pop-up outreach, though, you know, this is cruise night, this is farmers' night, this is everything, you know, where people already are. That's going to be a big focus, and I know that GWP already engages in this way, so we'll aim to build off of that and strengthen those efforts. Last but not least, you know, recycled water is not exclusive to potable reuse, but potable reuse is potentially an important component. And we've been working on potable reuse in California since, you know, oh, before I've been doing this, 35 years, Sarah Katz started her firm on potable reuse. And one of the things that we found to be really effective is going and visiting demonstration facilities. People can tour it, they see the technology firsthand, especially facilities where you can taste the water. So I know GWP has already started scheduling some of these tours, and we would want to encourage that and build on that. Digital outreach, fairly straightforward, we're going to use all of the available tools. The reality is that digital outreach is cost-effective and impactful. So we'll, you know, we'll learn through our opinion research how much of your community gets their information digitally. I expect it would be high, but we will, as mentioned, still use traditional methods, print and other resources for folks who aren't getting their news online. Media relations, you know, media has consolidated and changed quite a bit over the years, but it's still something that we do. So submitting op-eds, making sure that we have content in Glendale News Press and things like that will be included in our efforts. Measuring success, some of this is quantitative and some of it is more qualitative. We'll be able to track and evaluate outcomes, you know, what we're hearing from the community, what we're hearing directly from stakeholders and your customer base, what the social media engagement looks like, not just numbers, but what people are saying. This is to be more about listening within the community. And then, of course, output measures can be fairly straightforward, website visits, things like that, that's just numbers. So there's a qualitative component and a quantitative, but we're excited to be able to show you guys progress as we move through this effort. And last is a high-level overview of the timeline. So you can see, big picture, the cadence of our outreach and engagement activities. So of course, some of that foundational work happening now or has already happened. You know, I just want to mention the plan that was developed. You know, we think it's fairly comprehensive, but we're very open to feedback. So you guys know your community, and if there are additional components that you would like to see, we're really open to hearing that, and want to be sure that we're implementing the most effective plan possible. And I will take questions.
Thank you. Very comprehensive description of how you plan to do all this outreach. Are there any cards on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker.
Why don't we take the speaker?
Sure. Shall I sit down or are you going to sit here?
You have a seat, and then we may call you up or not.
No problem. Here we have Beth Brooks, we have three minutes.
I think that presentation was absolutely incredible. I know it's about outreach for water, which is not like the sexiest topic, but I think that you should hire her to do the public outreach for everything. I really think that that's the consultants you need. I know that your expertise is water, but what she just outlined was absolutely brilliant because I think we all know that the outreach from the city is not working. And she outlined all the steps that could work on every level in detail, how she would reach out to the community. I mean, I thought it was absolutely fantastic, and I think that you should look into utilizing a consultant like that, if not this woman and her company, because I thought it was absolutely outstanding as opposed to, and also to let you know that the Glendale Water and Power has the phone number for every customer. So you've got that already, you know, built in. So I just really wanted to say that, that, you know, the whole idea of having everybody's phone number through Glendale Water and Power, and just to commend her because I thought that was fantastic.
Thank you. Comments from my colleagues? Yes, Councilmember Satrian?
Go ahead.
Oh, I don't have much, but I want to go on one of those potable reuse facility tours, please. No, I'm serious, I do, I'm interested in seeing, where's the nearest facility where this is being done?
So the nearest one is the city of LA on Forest Lawn Drive. And actually, we have had discussions with the city of LA on some potential partnerships for our initiatives, and we are in the process of scheduling that tour, and so we will keep you apprised.
Is there anywhere in LA County where the potable water, what we call, anyway, I won't use, I won't use the bad terms for it, but.
Purified water.
The recycled water that then becomes potable, is that actually in the water systems for any cities?
Right, so right now it's just pilot, pilot programs. So Metropolitan Water District has one in the city of Carson, in which they have partnered with the LA County Sanitation District. The city of Los Angeles, LAWP, they also have a pilot project as well, because they also do wastewater. Here in Glendale, we have one, but it's not purified, it's just for irrigation.
Right, I know we have recycled water for irrigation, but is there anywhere where you know, you turn on the tap and there's, it's in there?
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, if you want, you can actually taste the water as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will do that. And then just on the, on the budget, because I wasn't quite sure what you said about the grant, you got $200,000 grant, $500,000. Because I know from the staff report, and you presented to us earlier, we appropriated $1.3 million for.
Correct.
Both of these, the water, water system master plan and the recycled water master plan, right?
That is correct.
$1.3 million. So is the communications part, maybe explain what that $500,000 is?
Absolutely. So our contract with Arcadis is about $1.2, $1.2 million.
Okay.
Of that $1.2, there's two assessments associated with that. There is a recycled water assessment, which is about $500,000, and then there is a infrastructure assessment, which is about another $700,000. And so the grant from the state is geared towards sustainable projects, which is the recycled water component. So that is, that will offset the $500,000 component.
Oh, so that portion is $500,000, and we got a grant for $200,000, which came in after we appropriated the $1.3, $1.2.
Exactly.
So it's, it's like a gift right now.
As soon as we appropriated it, we stopped that funding.
Oh, good work, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just a couple. Thank you. And thanks for getting the grant. There's a couple of things for the community outreach portion. One, in being able to identify how our residents get their news. The city just conducted a community satisfaction survey, which probably should be, the details of that and the info that came out of that should probably be provided in, because there was a section in that community survey that asked, how do you get your news? So it's a great starting point for you. Just, I'm just pointing to some resources that are available to you, so you don't have to start from scratch, and I want us to be able to use the different surveys and plans that we have to help with others. I noticed some organizations on the list that was provided, and I noted to staff that have nothing to do with Glendale. An example would be the Center for the Arts in Eagle Rock, the Surf Rider Foundation, Travel Town Museum Foundation, and then.
I'll look back at that, because you're right, some of those should not.
So I don't know where this list came from, but we have a lot of wonderful organizations in the city of Glendale, and I would hope that we're utilizing our local organizations. I think as, this is something that I had talked to our previous Assistant General Manager for Water, was while water may be one of those things that people don't want to hear about, everybody does care about the impact of that on their, on their bills and how they're going to be able to cover it, right? And so I think as we are going through this process, it's also important how we educate people on using water. I've said this time and again, while I wish, you know, everybody cared for the environment, but when someone's worried about putting food on their table, like keeping a roof over their head, the last thing they're thinking about is perhaps switching over their lawn or, you know, how they're conserving water. But when you associate that savage with what is happening with inflation and costs going up, it makes a very big difference on how someone's processing that information. I also had told our GWP staff, we have a lot of wonderful programs that are available, and some even resources online that I don't think our community is very well aware of, and how we use this opportunity to also disseminate information to them. I will also note that, because I've said this several years in a row now, there's a water festival in Glendale that's expected to draw about 15,000 people in July. There's no better place, I would think, that you could use to not only communicate what you need to, but something fun and interactive that could go along with, with that festival to educate people would be a great opportunity to do that. I said this on a previous item as well, but not just city planned events, but we're lucky to see an increase in different organizations putting together different events that are hosted in our city, but they're not necessarily planned by the city of Glendale themselves. So would be great to see those pop-ups up there, too. I'll join on the tour, too.
Yeah.
I want to drink the water, but I'll, I'll join.
Do the men have pants?
Okay. Anything else?
I have one last thing, but I'm going to use this opportunity to raise and request that an item be placed on next week's agenda. This is something I've generally talked about, but, and I've seen especially with some public works projects, but how we do RFPs for our communications and community outreach. I don't like the fact that they're built into other contracts and that becomes a subcontract of another contract. We should be able to, as a city, have our own, you know, we decide which companies we're going with, and when somebody meets our standards, it's great, sometimes they don't, and, you know, we fall into an issue with, that was the only one that was available through the larger contract that we got. And so being able to separate those out as part of some of the procurement things that we're going to be working on, but that's for next week. Thank you.
Okay. Was, I believe Mr. Bratman made the motion.
Well, I will. No, I didn't, but I will make the motion. This is a note and file, I think, so I'll make the motion to note and file the report.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yeah.
Bratman?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Kasakian?
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Let's go to item 8C, please.
Next item, 8C, Glendale Water and Power, regarding utilization of the alternative project delivery method for the Water Advancement Meter Infrastructure, AMI, system replacement project. One, resolution authorizing the acting general manager of Glendale Water and Power or his designate to utilize the alternative project delivery method for the Water Advancement Meter Infrastructure System Replacement Project, adopting the request for proposals number 4017 for the Water AMI system replacement project, and directing the city clerk to advertise for proposals.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian.
Mayor Najarian, Member of City Council. The current Water Advanced Metering Infrastructure, or commonly known as AMI, system is experiencing significant problems and failures, and as a result, GWP staff has been manually reading these failed meters that has increased operational and maintenance costs. Therefore, staff, GWP staff, is seeking council approval to replace the existing AMI system with a more reliable and technologically advanced solution. With that, I'll turn it to Jan Carlo for the presentation of this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. My name is Jan Carlo Alcantara, I'm the Senior IT Application Analyst for GWP, and as Mr. Galanian said, I'll be presenting today the Water Advanced Meter Infrastructure, or AMI, system replacement program, project, sorry. Do I need to put the presentation?
Do you need a presentation?
Sorry about that.
Sorry about that, the screen froze, so.
Yeah? Okay, Jan Carlo, here you go. You saw what I did to the other gentleman?
What's that?
You've got three minutes to give us a summary.
All right, well, I'll do my best to summarize. So, yeah, as Mr. Galanian mentioned, we have, so our water system, our AMI system, which is, it collects interval reads, it collects usage information, alerts, alarms from all the meters, or 35,000 meters. That's, at the current stage, is failing. We have, we have, we've lost communication with 33% of our meters. That means that 30%, 33% of our customers don't have hourly usage available, they don't have benefits such as leak detection or visibility into their usage until the next bill. And then as a result, customer service is sending its, its field services team to manually collect usage reads for billing, and their workload is up to 50, 60% now just, just meter reading. This results in longer turnaround times for other tasks like special orders or replacement of the electric meters. We're also not able to provide complete data sets to conservation programs or planning efforts, like the recycling water program we just covered right now. So over the last several years, we tried to alleviate the deficit by placing the automated Let's get through the background. Here we go. I could, I could start here, yeah. So this is where I'm at. So, yes, over the, over the last several years, we've tried to alleviate the deficit by placing AMR, or Automated Meter Reading Endpoints, on specific routes. So these endpoints collect hourly and billing usage and are read by drive-by, so it also requires our field services team. However, both of them are now, both AMI and AMR are no longer manufactured as their older technology. And lastly, our current systems are, are no longer in support, which puts us at risk, not only if there's a system failure, but it also exposes us to security vulnerabilities. So our existing system is now over 13 years old, and that's what we're seeing some of these issues today. So that's for today's proposed action items. We are seeking council to authorize GWP to dispense with competitive bidding and approve an RFP to replace our Water AMI system. This RFP will cover the replacement of systems, endpoints, and meters, and this approach will allow us to improve overall schedule acceleration, keep costs low, and if we split the, if we were to split the RFP into software and installation, we would expect a cost to increase for about 20 to 25%. And the estimated cost of the project is between 20 and 26 million, depending on the vendor. We have appropriations of almost 10 million, and we would need to allocate the remaining funds in future budget cycles. So that's the presentation. Skip the couple slides on background, but if you guys have any questions.
That's fine. Any questions?
No, I don't.
Any cards? Any cards on this?
No cards.
No?
No cards and no speakers, no callers.
No, nothing.
I can move the item.
Sorry?
I can move the item.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Bratman?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Kasakian? Mayor Najarian?
Yes. 8D, please.
Next item on the agenda, 8D, Public Works Regarding Purchase and Sales Agreement to Acquire 1745 Gardena Avenue. One, motion authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement with Silver Glen Properties LLC for the city's purchase of real property located at 1745 Gardena Avenue, Glendale, California, assessor parcel number 5640-031-023, subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney. Two, resolution of appropriation to provide funds for the land purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian.
Yeah, Mayor Najarian, member of City Council. Staff has negotiated a purchase and sales agreement to acquire the property at 1745 Gardena Avenue for $2,799,000. That will have a significant cost savings for the Beeline Bus Maintenance Facilities Electrification Project. So therefore, we need a motion to authorize this land purchase and a resolution of appropriation for the funds that will come out of measure our local return funds. If you have any questions, staff are available.
Any questions? No questions? We did have a, several closed session items on this, so council is aware of the benefits of obtaining this property next to the Beeline Maintenance Facility to expand our footprint and our operations. Are there any cards on this item?
There are no cards or callers.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Let's take roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian? Kasakian? Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Let's go to 8E.
Next item on the agenda, 8E, Public Works Regarding Adopt the Plans and Specifications for the Central Park Block Project. One, resolution adopting the plans and specifications for the Central Park Block Project, specification number 3951, and plan number 22-106, and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Mr. Galanian.
Yeah, Mayor Najarian, member of City Council. The intent of this staff report is to ask the City Council to adopt the plans and specifications and authorize the city clerk to advertise for bids for the Central Block, Central Park Block Project, which is designed to essentially better integrate the park's civic and cultural facilities and create new public spaces and recreational opportunities adjacent to the Armenian-American Museum and Cultural Center that's currently under construction. Engineer's estimate is between 13 and 15 million dollars, which hasn't been fully budgeted at this time. But once we receive bids and are, has been evaluated, we'll come to City Council, present the item, and request to award a contract, and if necessary, appropriation of additional funding for, to complete the project. If you have any question, again, staff from Public Works, CDD, and Parks and Community Services are available.
Councilmember Asatrian?
I raised this question at the staff briefing, but one of the concepts we had talked about was doing something with our sister cities in the alleyway. I didn't see that as part of the proposal, but I was told by staff that that's something we can add on later, and it wouldn't, you know, not hindering this project or to move forward. And so I just wanted to make sure that we, I don't know what you need for that portion.
As Councilmember Asatrian, as I noted during the briefing, the intent was to establish a sister city committee with participation from various sister city representatives. And collectively, the committee can come up with ideas, suggestions, recommendations as to what can or cannot be installed in this so-called sister city alley. There is a space available adjacent to the ARC that could accommodate potentially that alley, and we're just waiting for, to kickstart that process with sister cities. So it's not part of the design of the project, but there is space available that we can utilize if need to.
So it can be added on?
It can be added, yeah, depending.
And, thank you. That was raised before. May I suggest that we not call it an alley? Perhaps a promenade might be more dignified to the sister city relationships, or something of that nature.
We're open to suggestions. That's a good idea.
I'm just saying. You say alley, and that sets it in stone for the rest of the organization. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Okay. Let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian? Kasakian? Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Okay, let's move to the next item.
Item D, Public Works Regarding Purchase and Sale Agreement to Acquire 1,700... Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
So we're on to 12.
Okay, 12V. Public Works Regarding Adopt the Plans and Specifications for the Central Park. Okay, which one is this? Can you please?
12A. We're going to do 12A first?
Got it.
All right.
Okay. 12A, Discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Request. Councilmember Brotman's request to agendize a sponsorship of up to $5,000 of Glendale Out's Pride Event on June 7, 2024, at Adams Square Mini Park. We do have several public comments on this one.
Would you like to be heard first, Mr. Brotman, or should we hear it from the public?
Let me, I'll just give a preamble. You know, we regularly honor important segments of the community here. Many examples that one could give, but whether it's the Armenian community with the genocide remembrances that we do, Filipino community with our friendship statue that we've placed on city property, the Korean community through the Comfort Women statue, also on city property, with the Latino community, we sponsor seats at the Glendale Latino Association fundraisers and also hold a Caesar Chavez event every year. And I could go on. We recently agreed to sponsor a scholarship with, through Black in Glendale, thanks to then-Mayor Asatrian for raising that. And hopefully, we'll get back to supporting Martin Luther King Breakfast, some walks in future years. I think we dropped the ball this last year. But we do not provide any kind of sponsorship, any kind of special recognition, apart from proclamations, for our LGBTQ plus community. And I think that's a glaring omission that I would like to right. In fact, we did sponsor an event in 2023, a Pride event. I think that was Glendale Library Arts and Culture that did that, but then, for some reason, dropped it in 2024. So my request is simply that we provide financial sponsorship for the 2025 Pride Event that is scheduled for June 7 in Adams Square Mini Park with a grant of up to $5,000. I have many examples of similar types of things in nearby cities. I don't know that I need to go through that. I'll leave it here for now, and if we have to come back to that, we can.
Okay. Then let's go to the public now.
The first comment is Beth Brooks.
Okay, I'm not surprised that, you know, Mr. Brotman came out with his shopping list after Mr. Najarian was installed as mayor. I'm always here asking for, you know, why aren't you helping renters? And then hearing, well, you gave this money for this event, and that event, and this event, and that event. Maybe you shouldn't give, maybe you should stop doing that. Maybe you should prioritize the elderly renters. You shouldn't get $5,000 for this event. Everybody you just mentioned shouldn't get the money for an event. The elderly renters should get the money. Why do I never hear anybody on this council advocating for them? I never hear anybody. I know, Ms., I know that, I know you care. I watch you, and I know you do. But why do I never hear any of you asking for money for renters? So you know what? You should not get that money. Until you ask for money for renters, you shouldn't get two cents. And they shouldn't have gotten two cents. That's ridiculous. How dare you? No, I'm not kidding. You're laughing? It's not funny. It's really not funny. It's disgusting that every time I come up here, I don't hear one of you saying, you know what, we're going to give money to assist rent. Nobody! Don't shake your head. It's really, I, my head's going to explode from this. Why don't you ask money for renters, Mr. Brotman? You don't like renters? You have when?
Well, let's not go back and...
I'll get back and forth.
No, really. It doesn't matter, but I never hear it.
You should do some homework, and you'll find out.
Yeah, I'll do some homework?
Yeah.
Is that how you respond to people? You know who wouldn't respond like that? Mr. Kasakian. He wouldn't respond like that. He wouldn't say to me, read 200 pages so you could get the answer. And he wouldn't say, go do your homework. I'm here every week, and guess what? I don't hear you. So, yeah, put up your arms. This is the, this is chutzpah. You know what chutzpah is? I think you know what chutzpah is. It's chutzpah to the nth degree, and it's ugly.
No, 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 no. Save it for the sporting events. We don't cheer in City Council.
Just one, just one comment. I had brought up for us to bring back the program for renters, and it's supposed to be part of the budget conversations that are starting this Thursday, Ms. Brooks. So if you'd like to participate in that conversation, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
And we have discussed multiple times a special program for supporting senior renters. So it's been a discussion put on this council many times. I think we mentioned it earlier today when Ms. Brooks was here. So that's why I shook my head, because it is something we've discussed, it is something we've requested, staff is working on it.
Next speaker.
Alan Durham.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, council members. I'm Alan Durham. I would like to request that the council does agendize the sponsorship of the Pride Event. It's not very much money. It's very immaterial to the city budget. You know, the city of Glendale should foster a sense of inclusivity for all of its residents. Just this evening, we've heard comments that categorize certain groups as, I would say, quote, "others," whether it's based on ethnicity, gender, or some other characteristic. And as a city, I encourage our residents to reject this current political environment that seeks to divide rather than unite us, and that Glendale be a welcoming, inclusive city for all of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sheldon.
I'm a proud Outgay man. Do not give any money to Glendale's Out's pervert event. So you want to know what these events are about? Here's a good book called The Rainbow Parade, which is from the library right across the The center page, we have two men outfitted in leather sex gear, which is a sexual fetish. Is that what you meant by inclusion? Next to them, we also have a kinky, what are they, they dress up in dog suits and fuck each other, and then we have a naked-ass women walking down the road. Is that what you mean by inclusion? I know you love to smirk, Brotman, especially since R. had to put his tongue up your ass to get you all to stab Vartan in the back. Oh, but back to my book.
Mr. Sheldon, stop the clock.
It's called Free Speech.
You are certainly entitled, under the First Amendment...
It's called Free Speech.
...to make those, use those words. I'm asking you to use a little more discretion and keep the decorum.
Ask your colleague not to be such an asshole, smirking and smiling and thinking he's funny.
All I can say is, please, hold on, hold on. I'm going to give you your time when we start. I'm just asking you to please consider a more restrained and dignified course of speech. Please start the clock.
Do you think sexual bondage gear is dignified in a children's book in the library? What do you think is going to go on in Glendale Out? I gave Susie over here copies of the page, if you'd like to take a closer look. This is called normalization of perversion. You get children to see sex bondage gear in the children's room, right here. Now, what's that plus, Brotman, that you mentioned, the LGBTQ plus plus? What's the plus? Well, we know what the plus is. It's sexual perversion. Bondage gear, right here in a children's book. Well, I'm glad to let you know that the Supreme Court ruled today that transgender individuals can be excluded from the military. In Utah, they have banned trans flags flying from government buildings because the trans flag is a flag of conquest. It is not a flag of inclusion, intolerance, love, and joy, unless you think men dressing up in leather and shoving their fists up each other's ass is love. Is that what you think? Is that the people you defend, Ellen? Is that what your Armenian brothers and sisters voted you in for? Yeah, there's a real gay man here, looking at you. A gay man who was walking in gay parades before you were born. Do I get included? Maryland has begun to paint over the gay rainbow sidewalks because they understand they're political. Glendale, get with it and get off the crap.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Next speaker.
Next is Mike Mohill.
Sexual bondage is not love. Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Thank you, Ray Sheldon. You know, the transgender have hijacked the gay and lesbian movement. Now you want to give money to Glendale Out, a transgender organization? We don't have $5,000 to spend on this political action by Mr. Brotman. We have over $1.2 billion of unfunded pension obligation. That's where our money should be spent, on the finances of the city. $5,000 here, $5,000 there. Why don't you give me $5,000, Mr. Brotman? Since it's not your money. Mr. Brotman is an LGBTQ XYZ activist, and that's why he's there wanting money. Why don't we do a special $5,000 for the US veterans in this community? Give money to the families of the veterans, okay, who need money. Why don't we give a special recognition for Veterans Day and have $5,000 set aside? We can find all kinds of reasons to spend $5,000. And your personal agenda, Mr. Brotman, is not one of them. We all have personal agendas, but just because you're a councilperson, you think you have the authority, you may, you may have three votes tonight, you know, to get this thing moved forward. But Mr. Najarian, I hope you act like a conservative, like you say you are. Thank you.
Next is Shane Lee.
Hey, everyone. I support this item. I think it's super cool. $5,000, it's a drop in the bucket compared to the city budget, so I think it's totally worthwhile to give it to the Pride Event. The, I'm, one of the things that makes me really proud to be a Californian, a Glendalean, and an American is the success of the gay rights movement. A lot has changed even in the past 10 years. I mean, again, 10 years ago, we had still not ruled for Obergefell, and it's one of those things that really makes me feel proud as an American, seeing the advancement of individual rights. I think it's perfectly in line with the foundations of this country, the principle of individual liberty and autonomy. And I think that it's part of this, you know, very messy, but very beautiful, like, march of progress that we've had from our history, from the founding document that was very problematic, but a good idea. but had good ideas. And then as a society, we've grown the, the rights. We've ended slavery. We've had the civil rights movement. We've had the feminist movement. I think that the gay rights movement is part of that legacy, and it's our job as Americans to celebrate individual liberty, to celebrate freedom, and especially when it comes to, you know, somebody's individual privacy. You know, what you do, who you love, is absolutely your business. And I think it's very amazing and beautiful that we, as a country, have, excuse me, have codified these protections. And I think $5,000, which, again, really isn't that much money, so I think concerns about the budgetary impact of this grant are trivial and hyperbolic. I think it would be, it'd be awesome. And I think it's our duty as Americans, as a people, as people who love freedom, respect democracy, I think it is our duty to spend, you know, a couple thousand dollars to allow this form of representation to occur. And again, I, I know I affiliate myself with some other organizations. I just want to say I'm speaking as a private citizen. I'm sure those organizations would support this, but just to be clear, I'm speaking as Shane, not chapter leader of anything. So again, again, anytime that I go on Wikipedia and I look at the maps of, like, countries that have legalized gay marriage, and every time I see our country, you know, highlighted, it, it really does fill me with a sense of pride. It's one of the things that really does make me feel proud and patriotic to be an American. And I think that we, we have an obligation as, as our, and like, as our position in the world, we have an obligation as Americans to support gay rights, to support tolerance, because there's nothing more American than celebrating somebody's right to be happy and love who they want. So you should totally do this grant. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Alan Dish.
City Council, City Council, good evening. My name is Alan Dish. I am for the, the event, and we should give the money. I don't think most of the people are against LGBT and so on. What I'm, I think what people have a problem with, and then I'll go back, I promise, the, is that they sense a certain elitism, if I may put it this way. You know, you remember 2016, if I may digress, Mr. Mayor, presidential election, and on the Times cover, it was, the big story was what to do with toilets and so on. It was this idea of total disconnect from everyday worries of people. Another point, what I admire so much with, about LGBTQ or whatever and plus, is what Mr. Sheldon didn't like. It's the plus, no? The big question is, how should we read, the big, how should we read this plus? Is it in a British empiricist way, in the sense of, let's keep it open? We, what if someone comes, you know, and says, we don't see our identity on the list, so let's keep it open? Or there's a wonderful Australian theorist who says, what if you can be a plus directly? Plus stands for subjectivity. I would say I am plus in the sense of extra, you know? It's a deep philosophical insight. I admire that point. Another thing that I find interesting is people who are worried that if we teach gender ideology, that it may, it may change and so on, their identity. But because they say this is essential, that you're born with a certain identity, you cannot change it. Okay, then, why the fear to teach it? I feel like the people who protest against the teaching of it believe even more in the, that there is gender, that there is something performative. Nonetheless, to conclude, my ideal of fundamentalism, if I may put it this way, two examples, Tibet and the Amish. In Tibet, they have this totally distanced relationship to the Chinese occupation. You know, the Dalai Lama in exile. The Amish, even wonderful, even more better. You know, they tolerate, they call it the Englishman. They simply ignore and so on, you know? I feel like this, it, it masks nonetheless this fascination of LGBT people, white people, why they're against it, ooh, what are they doing, and so on, and so on. It's this envy and, I stopped, but, okay. Is that okay? I can go to my seat. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two calls. The first caller is Rita Bedrosian. You're on air. You have three minutes. Rita Bedrosian.
Hi, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Hi. Hello, members of city council. Thank you for giving me this time to talk. I am not a regular here, unlike some people who we have seen, who seem to be here and speak on every topic. I have been an educator for 40 years, and I have worked in this district for 25. Yes, I said that correctly. I have worked at Glendale for 25 years. I wanted to call today to let you know how nice it was to hear Otto's apology from a few weeks ago. We really appreciated that. The allocation of the funds for an event where everybody is welcome and accepted is delightful and promising. And for everyone who said rather negative and derogatory things about it, that just doesn't happen. Now, members of council, I'd like you to please remember that as Armenians, we have come a long way since arriving in this country, whether that was 40 years ago, 40 years ago. We left our respective countries because of repression. So why would you do that to a group of people now? I would greatly appreciate the funds that would go to encourage such a positive and cultural event and really just give people the happiness and the dignity to love whoever they choose. Also, and lastly, for those people complaining and bringing negativity and dissatisfaction to our city, many of those people don't live here. They don't work here. They don't pay taxes here. So please stop listening to them and start listening to us. We are the voters that eventually gets to decide who will sit in your seats. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our final caller is Peter. My apologies. That, that was the end of it. Thanks.
Okay. Comments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was, I mean, I was just going to say, I was just going to say that, you know, those, the hateful and ignorant comments that we heard from the usual suspects are just more reason why we need to show our support for a community that continues to be subject to exclusion, discrimination, prejudice, and violence. So I urge my colleagues' support for this item.
I'll say that this isn't the first time I'm saying it, but it's been a very difficult two-plus years in the city of Glendale. It's been a heartbreaking moment to see the divisiveness and for even one member of our community to feel like they don't belong or it's not safe here. I think it's our responsibility as leaders to make sure that we are doing everything we can to create an inclusive environment. What I'll say about, one of the things that is very true, unlike the comments that were made here on the event that is put together for Pride Month in Glendale, is it's very community-oriented and holy. And I love how much love there is in that park that day and how that's celebrated in a very different way. While I recognize that there's a book being shown right now, you know, we each have different standards of what we would be okay with children seeing. I, for one, would not be okay with children being in that kind of environment, but I also know that that's not the environment that is seen in our park. And so I wholeheartedly support this. I think it's the least that we can do for a community that has seen so much pain in the last couple of years especially, so.
Well, first I want to say I stick by my apology from a month ago, maybe three weeks ago, but that doesn't imply that I, I want to see money being donated to Glendale Out. The problem that I have, number one, Glendale Out, upon my research, is a very opaque organization. I've done research. I've had staff make inquiries. I don't know what type of organization they are, whether they're a LLC, whether they're a partnership. They are certainly not a 501(c)(3) charity. In addition, I wasn't happy with the event that was put on in Adams Square Park a year ago or two years ago, where, to me, deeply offensive artwork was placed, pornography, and I just was not happy with that at all. Lastly, to my understanding, one of the principles of that organization is behind the website, Glendale Extremists, which proudly places my face and faces of other members of the community and deeply defames them. And so for that reason, I won't be able to support giving the money to Glendale Out. I don't know how many votes are needed, but if someone wants to make that motion...
Yeah, and I want to clarify, I just clarify one point, because they are not a 501(c)(3). You're right. They have discussed with Glendale Arts to act as a fiscal sponsor, so any funding would go through Glendale Arts, and they would be responsible for any kind of reporting and management of the flow of the money.
Well, you know, the same things that I atoned for, and I agree, I did make mistake, misstatements on that TV interview many months ago. I'm not seeing that, and I'm seeing much worse being put out there in the community against individuals, not just because, not saying that they are opposing transgenderism or whatever, but deeply, deeply offensive, stemming from principles of this organization. So I don't want to discuss it more at this point, but I'm not going to be supporting it.
Okay. And, and I should also say, I know of no connection between Glendale Out and, and this extremist network you're talking about, so I think that's, that's groundless. But regardless, we need three votes, so I guess we'll carry it over to next week?
No, I think it fails. Does it carry over or does it fail? What does it happen?
Well, it depends if there's a vote. So if there's a vote and it's two to one, it would fail, but a council member who's not here or a council member who voted in to not pass it could bring it back. So it's, it would be up to, up to you, to the council, as to whether to continue this item or have a vote, and then, and then one of the council members who's not here could, could ask for it to be brought back, so it's...
And if we simply don't vote?
It won't come, it won't come back. I mean, if it, if you don't vote, there'll be no action, and then somebody can ask for it to be brought back at a social meeting.
Okay. Can I ask now for it to be brought back next week and put on the new business agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me do that.
Does that need a vote?
No, I mean, you're, he's basically asking for it to be put over until next, till the next meeting.
Can that be done on one member's request?
It would come back on the same agenda, so yeah, I believe so. It would come back under the future agenda request, so you would, again, it would not be substantive discussion on, on it. It would just be whether to agendize it.
Okay. Well, was that a, was that a...
Or it could be a motion to continue, to continue to next week. That, that could pass on, on a majority.
Yeah, I'll move to continue it until next week.
That needs a second.
A second.
Okay, sure.
And then we go to roll call.
Council members, as Adrian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Garpetian, Kasakian, Mayor Najarian.
No. Does that...
So that, yes, that motion passes, so that will come back next week.
Okay.
And if I may, Mayor, my understanding is that, that artwork wasn't them. It's, it was something that was done by our libraries, just for clarification purposes, and my understanding was it was moved.
Yeah, I don't believe so. I think the artist is the principal of Glendale Out, and...
The artist was, but how's that space utilized? Or is that something that we would have to, I guess, talk about next week?
This is Mayor and members of council. This is going to require an in-depth discovery and reporting. And it wasn't agendized, so if, if you'd like, we can provide a memo to council on this.
I don't think it requires a mayor memo.
All right. Next, we've dealt with that item. Next item, 12B.
Next is Councilmember Brotman, Brotman's request to agendize a discussion of a shared mobility pilot program, and we do have several public comments on this as well.
Would you like to tee it up, Mr. Brotman?
Yeah, this is, as I said last week, just an effort to bring back something that we discussed in 2021 and never acted on, for, I guess, various reasons, but we, we did do an RFP. We did get responses to that RFP. I think we were not satisfied with those responses. We set it aside, and I would simply like to pick up where we left off. I do still think a shared mobility program of some kind would be of benefit to Glendale. My main interest is in bikes and e-bikes, but I think staff can look at the work that we did four years ago, and they can come back with various options for us to consider, including going back out with an RFP or some other method. So I think that's enough.
Okay, let's hear from the speakers.
The first speaker is Beth Brooks. You have three minutes.
I understand that in some cities, they actually did away with those scooters. I mean, if you're worried about traffic, traffic on the sidewalks is, is crazy. I walk. I don't, I don't drive. I take the bus or I walk, so I'm one of, you know, one of those people. But I also know on the sidewalks, you've got bicycle, you know, kids on bicycles, and they're basically running you down in the street when I'm out three times a day walking my dog. If you're going to have scooters, that's going to be cra- there's no, there's no need to have scooters in this city. If you want to get people out of their cars, I, I don't really care at this point. But you don't need to have traffic on the sidewalks. They're sidewalks. They're called sidewalks because they're on the side of the street, and you walk on them. You ride your bicycle in the, in the, in the, in the street, and that's, that's it. Why would you want to do that to people walking down the street? You, I don't understand even where this comes from, why you would even want this. It doesn't, who does this help? It only hurts people. If you're worried about traffic of people crossing the street, how about older elderly people? I walk with a cane. Do I want people behind me on scooters, on electrified scooters, running down, you know, rolling down the streets? This is just a waste of money. This is a total waste of money. And you are right about that network. You are so right about that network. They are insane, and they are going after you like crazy. Anyway, not related to that. I'm just, you know, I follow what they're doing. So that's it. I think this is, this is crazy. This is absolutely crazy. You already have, Mr. Brotman, you already want, you know, the, the less than 1% of the people in this city to be catered to with bike lanes, which were, you know, was like, what, 1,850 people? And now we have to have electric scooters? Come on. I mean, really? Can you please focus on what's good for the majority? That would really be nice for a city council to do once in a while. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Mike Mulhill.
This is a record, Mr. Mulhill. I mean, we're going to embroider your name on one of these front seats here, so...
Well, you can always read what I have to say in my newsletter. It's a summary, you know that. Scooters, wow. Ms. Brooks said it the best. They're dangerous. So dangerous that the progressive liberal city called Santa Monica got rid of them and other cities in the state of California. So why do we need to bring it here to Glendale? That's because Mr. Brotman thinks, you know, he wants, that's part of his Green New Deal. Scooters, bicycles, electric, everything. Scooters. It's dangerous. There are pictures by people, experts, showing picture, who've been... There are pictures by people, experts showing picture, who've been killed, made by scooter. People who drive scooters don't pay, don't, don't obey the law. They make their own laws. Just like we should have a license to have for a scooter, and also for a driver, for a bicycle, to know the rules of the road, but we don't have that. This scooter thing, man, you, you know, you, you sit and you just watch them zip right by. And they're on the cell phone, too. Let's not forget that. They're talking to their friends. It's not safe when you see a scooter. I don't know what's worse, seeing a scooter driver or a bicycle driver, especially when they have their, they have their phone in their ears. Now, this is, this is, this is a bad idea. We don't need scooters in the city. In fact, it was years ago, somebody here said that we don't need it, Mr. Brotman, as part of your progressive liberal program. I get tired of it. Can't you change your, can't you change your tune? It's always the same. Dictator Dan, my way or the highway. Look what you did to Mr. Najarian when you said, hey, I don't like this thing about the transgender stuff in Glendale Out. Oh, let's bring it back next week, so we're going to have more votes, you're going to hope that Artikasaki is going to join you. Right? Vartan will price they know to that vote, so it could be two to three again. This city is going backwards. We need to get new people on council. Vote out the incumbents in 2026 votes. Bye.
Next is Tony Passarella.
I talked to Mr. Garcia, and I'm not sure why this is coming back. I basically, in 2018, maybe, Mr. John, maybe you remember this, I basically, single-handedly defeated this shared mobility program when it came, came 12 consecutive weeks. So I got the support of Divine at the time, Garpetian, and Agregianian. So the other speakers, they already spoke, and I got, I got so many, so much data and so many stats here that it's overwhelmingly against the scooters. They're very dangerous, there's lawsuits, I mean, I can go on and on and on, but AI and myself collaborated on a poem, and I'd like to read it for you. This'll summarize, and I sent you emails, you must have got five emails from me. So here's the poem. Wheels of Risk. They zip through streets with silent grace, e-scooters carving through tight space. But what begins as urban fun can end before the ride is done. Joy riders laugh but fail to see the line that blurs responsibility. Under the influence weaving fast, a single crash could be their last. Pedestrians at risk each day as scooters swerve and lose their way. A pothole's grip, a faulty brake, and lives can crumble with just one mistake. Emergency rooms, visits climb, broken bones and stolen time. Brain injuries with a scar, yet lives forever changed they are. Death not now dot the silent trail, where helmets failed and speed prevailed. City lawsuits, public rage, a transport fad turn caution's page. Scooter failures worn and cheap lie twisted where the sidewalks weep. The cons outweigh the pros, they say, as safety gets swept clean away. So think before you take the ride, there's more than thrill that lurks inside. A moment's joy can cost you more than what these tiny wheels are for. Mrs. Satchin, I sure hope I can get your support on this. Mr. Garpetian is not here, but I know he supports me, but if I have to fight again and come back as many times I have to, if this passes, I'll do it. I'll do it for the sake of the people, the safety of pedestrians, in particular, if the bike riders, if the scooter riders want to have a careless disregard for their own safety, so be it, but the pedestrians are in danger with these scooters on the sidewalk.
Next is a call from Jordan Henry. You're on air, you have three minutes.
Hi, yeah, thank you for taking my call. I oppose this, and I oppose it because I've often heard Dan Brotman cite the California Office of Traffic Safety data to justify his interventions into multimodal bike transit renovations in the city. However, something that Mr. Brotman continually points out is that, you know, Glendale is the fifth most dangerous city of its size in California when it comes to pedestrian injuries and fatalities. That is true for one year. However, overall, our composite safety ranks us the 56th safest out of 60 cities in California of similar size. So you have to, he's cherry picking data to make these justifications, and when it comes to bicycle lanes, in that same set of data, we're ranked 44th safest out of 60. We're actually doing very well when it comes to all collision data overall, especially the composite, that same set of data that Mr. Brotman cherry picks from. Now, I understand focusing on the real issue, we do have issues with pedestrian collisions that should be addressed. The city council should focus on that and that alone. Focusing on that, that space where pedestrians come out into the roadway at intersections, especially busy ones, especially high-speed ones, where these accidents typically happen, that's absolutely fair and justified to look at and spend money on to fix. But to make the argument that bicycle lanes, scooters, I've been hit myself by a scooter in downtown LA, these things aren't going to address the actual problems that the data, the real data suggests. So I encourage you to not push your political campaign, not work for a collection, a very small collection of bike enthusiasts and activists, but instead, focus purely on pedestrians, because if you look at the data that Dan Brotman loves to cite incorrectly, it will only refute the argument to expand these multimodal transit avenues. Please, focus on what's important. Don't waste our money on political avenues. Only focus on the pedestrian safety, that is the only issue where we are lacking in Glendale. And again, it's so important to look at the data. Do not trust what Mr. Brotman cherry picks, because he is trying to manipulate the public in order to appease himself and his own grand ideology about bikes. So hope, hopefully you'll take this to heart, I mean it genuinely, and again, the data supports exactly what I'm saying. Thank you.
That is all.
Mr. Garcia, procedural question. Had we, is this, do we need to treat this like as a motion to reconsider? Had this been dealt with at that earlier date, or...
Mr. Mayor, my recollection was similar to, as Councilmember Brotman related, which was, there had been a discussion, and regarding the RFP, there was, decided not to move forward with those, any of those vendors, but there was, I don't know if it was direction, but a request that council made of staff to go look at a couple of options, which might include the pilot program. So I know it was something, it was actually something that staff was looking at and, and was, was trying to bring back, and I think Mr. Brotman's just asking to agendize it so we can do that. So I wouldn't think it needs a, nothing was denied, per se.
Okay, any other, let's keep brief comments. Let me start, and let me say that I have ridden the scooters. I have been hit by the scooters on the sidewalk on Bram Boulevard in the 400 block. I chased the scooter, tried to chase the scooter, obviously, you know who won that race. I am in litigation against scooter companies for defects and injuries that people have received, but it's not only scooters that we're talking about, there are other modes, so I will reserve my right to discuss this on the merits when it, if it does become an agenda, fully agendized item. So I won't oppose this. I mean, I would support the issue going forward for an agendized item. Mr. Brotman, you're okay with it? Ms. Asaturian?
I just, I want to make sure that it's not just scooters we're talking about, right?
In fact, I never mentioned scooters. I'm not that interested in scooters. I'm interested in e-bikes.
Because I'm not interested in scooters, but I'm interested in other, yeah, okay.
The way I understand it is bicycles and e-bikes.
I mean, that's my main interest. I think, you know, there's been a lot of change since 2021. I would like to look at some best practices. Have any cities figured out the scooter problem? And the problem with scooters is that they end up a mess on the street. And, you know, let's look at what other cities have done, but that's not really what this has ever been for me. I'm more interested in bikes and e-bikes.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
I know people want to make it about scooters, but it's really not.
I think we're ready for a vote to decide.
Okay, well, I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Asadarian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian, Kasakian, Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We currently have three speaker cards and one caller. The first speaker is Beth Brooks. You have five minutes.
You didn't speak during the three minutes, did you?
No.
No, 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 I didn't, I spoke on agenda items.
Just to make sure.
If you add it up, though, it's like a half an hour. Yeah, I was going to talk about how I think that we should have different commissions, but because it's late, I'm just going to just let you know that he's, Mr. Najarian is right. This is a very, very disturbing and dangerous group of individuals, this glendoextremistnetwork.com, glendoextremists on Instagram, and they actually even post on telephone poles pictures of people, and they say, call the police if you see them. They're crazy people. So anybody who's associated with this group do not have anything to do with them. I'm telling you, these are dangerous, crazy people who, who defame Mr. Najarian and other people, Mr. Beliki, I mean, they're really dangerous people. I do know one person who, I guess, was so disturbed by what they were doing to him that they, they, you know, it ruined their life, basically. They're very, very dangerous people, and if this organization is in any way attached to them, you should have nothing to do with them. That's all I want to say. He's absolutely right. I've been following them just to see who they're attacking, what they're doing. They're really horrible humans. And then just to look at all their followers on Instagram to see the network. You'll see the network, GUSD parent, you'll see, there's a whole network of them, and they're very dangerous people, it's a dangerous group. Done, he's, you're right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Glendale Yimby. You have five minutes.
Hello, City Council, my name is Shane Lee, and I'm with Glendale Yimby. I, I'm disappointed in Glendale's decision to oppose State Senate Bill 79. I'm grateful for the quick and thoughtful responses from council members regarding this concern. I emailed several of you last week, so thank you for responding. That's really awesome, I appreciate that. Anyway, I was made aware of Glendale's opposition while watching the State Senate Local Government Committee meeting on April 30th. Glendale City Council never held a public meeting regarding SB 79, and so the decision to oppose SB 79 is undemocratic and unrepresentative. SB 79 will make it faster and easier to build multifamily housing near transit stops like train and rapid bus lines by making it legal for more homes to be built in these areas and streamlining project review processes. We must prioritize people over property values and build density near transit to lower home prices in the state. We must mandate cities upzone near transit. The broad prohibitions on multifamily housing that currently exist also increase climate pollution, both through reducing transit ridership and forcing people to drive private vehicles for more of their trips. Across California, unfortunately, single-family zoning-only districts still dominate the land use around many publicly funded transit systems. Therefore, I would like to humbly request that the city council instead and through the enthusiastic, enthusiastically support SB 79, and I would like to ask you to direct our lobbyists to encourage state senators to vote yes on SB 79. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
You next is Ellen Dish.
Excuse me, Councilmember Asaturian.
I, I mentioned this to staff, but we obviously were not aware that this had moved forward in that way, but one of the recommendations I made to staff is that, number one, working with members, if we have issues, there is a difference between putting in a request for an amendment, which is how I kind of like to work through things, both for things that we want to push on the state level, as well as, you know, be opposed to something. There may be a lot of great things in the bill, but there may be just surgical amendments that would fit our local needs, and that's how we should be looking at policy in general. I'm also expecting that we get a list from our lobbyists from Sacramento to provide to all of the council based on our needs and our requests, and we should be made aware before there are testimonies being made, so.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next is Ellen Dish. Oh, okay. We have one caller, Peter Perigo. Peter, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is Peter Perigo, and I am calling in regards to the upcoming increase to the solid waste fee that will go into effect on July 1st. It will be the third of five such annual increases that were originally approved by the council on June 6th of 2023. When the council voted on the approval, sorry, the proposal, its passing was contingent upon a review process before future price increases. Since at that time, no one, even within Public Works, knew the true economic impact that the closing of Shoal Canyon Landfill or the implementation of California state law SB 1383 would have on future costs. To remind the council, SB 1383 called for the mandatory collection of organic waste, processing of recyclables, and ensuring edible food is recovered. Both of those events, the closing of Shoal Canyon and the implementation of 1383, occurred on December 31st, 2033, sorry, I'm sorry, 2023, six months after the proposal was approved. There are now nearly 18 months of data points that can be scrutinized. I request that before July 1st, the council agendize a public review of how these events have impacted the integrated waste management budget, and to compare the projected expenses of the cost of service analysis to the actual costs incurred over the last two years, to see if a third fee increase is in fact necessary at this time. Would the council be amenable to my request?
Go ahead and finish your public comment, please.
I'm, I'm done.
Okay.
I'm asking if the council would be amenable to my request that you agendize a public review after two years and question whether a third increase at this time is necessary.
Any other speakers?
That is all.
Okay, that concludes oral communications. Okay, that concludes oral communications, we have no new business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.